Ruth, were you able to get ahold of them?
What's that?
Were you able to get ahold of them?
Can we hear him?
Okay. Oh Curtis isn't over here, I can spread out. You can spread out too. Shut up son, I got all this stuff. I am pissed at you. Boy, all this stuff on my eyes, I hate it. Zachariah, you know we have the Thompson Springs first?
Oh, not first.
No, you're not.
Do you know if they need the screen?
They won't, but it's okay.
It's gonna be.
Where did you say the, where did you say the report from?
The onetime.
Yeah, I left the room. Is that Mr. Wells?
Yes, this is me.
Okay, great. Can you see it? I don't, but I'll give you. Give you mine. Here it is. This. I got it, I got it. Welcome. I will call this meeting of the Thompson Springs Special Service District, Fire District Administrative Control Board, regular meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. Present are Councilman Greg Halliday, Councilwoman Jaylen Hawks, Councilman Evan Clapper, Councilwoman Mary McGann, and Councilman Rory Paxman, Ruth Dillon, County Administrator, and Diana Carroll, County Clerk Auditor. Oh, hi Curtis!
Hello!
And Councilman Curtis Wells on the spaceship. So, we will call to order, are there any citizens to be heard on the Thompson Springs Special Service District? Fire District, okay. Ratification of bills? Over the approval of minutes, this first, approval of minutes for August 21st, 2018. Yes, Jay-
I will make a motion to- I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the Thompson Springs Fire District Board Regular Meeting of August 21st, 2018, and authorize the Chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Jaylen Hawks, seconded by Evan Clapper. I will have a roll call vote. Curtis Wells?
Aye.
Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Jaylen Hawks?
Yes.
Evan Clapper?
Yes.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Rory Paxman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Now we will go to the ratification of bills.
All right. Grand County, bills to be approved for Thompson Springs Fire District for 9/18/2018. Is that what we're on? That's right. Okay. Total bills, $893.68. Total bills and payroll, $893.68.
Do I have a motion?
I'll second it.
You first, oh, okay. Motion by Rory Paxman to accept the bills from the Thompson Springs Fire District, seconded by Jaylen Hawks. Roll call vote, once again. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Jaylen Hawks?
Yes.
Rory, uh-
Rory Paxman?
Yes.
Evan Clapper?
Yes.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
And Curtis Wells?
Yes.
Okay. Fire Chief Report. Mark Markham is out sick, so I will read the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Report. Incidents, none since 8/14. Equipment, Engine 41, oil change, 9/18. Fire extinguishers inspected and current. Facilities, Road Department, chipped sealed entrance road to the fire station. Training, Chief attended responding to incidents involving flammable liquids transported by railroad training at North Salt Lake Fire Department on 8/24. Sir, no, I do not have, we do not have any new business, any old business. Future considerations? Motion to adjourn. I would accept.
So moved.
Motion by Evan Clapper, seconded by Jaylen Hawks. We will now move to Grand County Community Reinvestment Agency Special Meeting. Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. The time is 4:04. Presenting are Zachariah Levine and, what was your name again?
This is Adam Long with Smith-Harvey.
Adam Long.
And I'll give him an opportunity to introduce himself in just a moment. Okay, so in this meeting of the Community Reinvestment Agency, our two primary objectives are to solicit public comment on the proposed project area plan and budget, and also to pass a resolution that would serve as an authorization from the City of Moab for the Grand County Agency to expend taxing within city limits. So that would be an authorization that the city will review and approve next week, but the county is partying to it, so it also needs to, or the agency is partying to it, so it also needs to sign it. So prior to getting to those two items of business, I wanted to just once again provide a brief summary of community reinvestment areas and how they work, and then we'll get into the public hearing items of the resolution. So, in addition to county staff, we have also been lucky to utilize and benefit from the services of Susie Becker with Zeins Bank Public Finance, and Adam Long with Smith-Harvey. And I'm gonna just let Adam introduce himself, and then we'll get into the rest of the presentation.
Yeah, Zachariah mentioned, my name's Adam Long, I'm a part of the firm of Smith-Harvey in Salt Lake City. A big part of my practice is economic development, and particularly what we call redevelopment, and typically the creation of these project areas and the provision of taxing financing in order to enable development. I've been doing this for a number of years. Prior to this, I was a CPA, so I have some, thankfully some understanding of how Excel spreadsheets work, which is a rare thing among attorneys. And I've, in this process, basically handling the legal side of it, drafting resolutions and ordinances, making sure the agency complies with the various statutory requirements. And Susie Becker of Zeins Public Finance is taking care of the actual drafting, the planning budget, the economic and financial analysis. And we've excused her, she's on vacation with her grandkids that was planned long before we scheduled this meeting.
Okay. So happy to have Adam here with us, and for you all to get some face time with him as well. So what is the CRA? It is governed by Title 17(c), the Community Reinvestment Agency Act. This is an act that basically creates an umbrella, or sort of organizational structures that you might be more familiar with, like RDAs, redevelopment areas, or EDAs, economic development areas, or CDAs, community development areas. They're all under the umbrella of the Community Reinvestment Agency Acts at this point. So an agency is a limited purpose, local government entity. It's the agency that is created by the county council, and you all serve as the board of the agency. And in that, it is a legally separate, but operationally similar entity to the county. As the board, you govern the agency, and once the agency is established by resolution, then it can create project areas. And a project area is basically the geographic boundaries that the agency can exercise its authority. And those are within Grand County's boundaries, and you could have, you know, one project area or many project areas. And the project area is also established by ordinance. And then, once that area is established, the funding for projects that occur within that area is established by interlocal agreements between the various taxing entities within that area. So how does it work, functionally speaking? We're talking about new growth, so property tax in this case, associated with new growth. So assuming that within the next few meetings we establish our CRA that would serve as year zero. At year zero, we have a base level of tax revenue that's going to the participating taxing entities. From that point forward, as new development occurs, there is tax revenue that's associated with that new growth. By participating in the project area, the taxing entities are saying, "We're going to take some of our proportional tax associated with that new growth, and we're going to contribute it to this TIF account, this Tax Increment Financing Account." And so, we're going to keep a portion of our tax revenue, and then we're gonna contribute a portion of it to this project area. At the end of the project's lifetime, all of the taxing entities go back to having their proportional split. But of course, the assessed value of all of the properties in the project area have gone up because new development has occurred. And so each of the taxing entities ends up collecting a significantly higher amount of tax revenue than they would have without that new growth, without that development within the project area. Project lifetime can be any length of time, but we have chosen 20 years, which is quite typical. Okay? It's really important to remember, both for you all and for the public, we are not talking about new taxes. We are talking about a distribution of taxes from new growth, doesn't affect the amount of tax revenue that the taxing entities are collecting now within the project area. We're talking about the distribution of tax money associated with the new growth. No new taxes. In the proposed project area, the contributions from the various taxing entities were established over many, many months. I've been meeting with the primary taxing entities for quite some time now. We've done a lot of work together. And the allocations that are shown up on this table are the allocations, or the percentage splits of that new growth, that projected new growth, that were used to establish a project area budget. Okay, so they all work together. So you can see, you know, each entity has kind of established its own formula for contributing tax money, incremental tax money, to the project area. How it works, once the agency is established, again, this body is the agency board, you create a project area, that's the step that we're in now. Once the project area is established, using the project area plan that establishes the project area, you begin attracting development to that, to the project goals. And then, you know, as new development occurs within the project area, new tax money is then brought in from new growth. That creates additional revenue for the project area, and then it becomes an iterative process at that point. The advantages of using this form of public financing is that you reduce all of the administrative requirements to just this upfront work that we're doing now. It limits the legal exposure of the taxpayers in the county as a whole, because it is a separate legal entity. In the end, all of the taxing entities that are participating will collect more tax revenue because of that new development, and then it creates a competitive environment here relative to other areas when we talk about attracting and stimulating desirable development in the future. These are the proposed project area boundaries. You'll notice on the dotted line that it includes properties located within city limits. That's why we need the City of Moab to provide the authorization for this agency to expend tax increment within their boundaries. It's quite a large project area, and that's drawn intentionally to support the project area plan goals, and also because we're not entirely certain which parcel will be the first to try to seek out some of the incentives provided by the agency. As far as the project area plan goes, and what the money that is generated within this project area could fund, talking about USU Moab and infrastructure associated with USU Moab, essential workforce housing, affordable housing, economic development and diversification efforts, and then just general capital improvements that are needed in order to support desirable growth within the project area boundaries. Just a quick timeline of what we're looking at from here until everything is in place and we can start actually implementing the plan. Today, we're holding a public hearing. Presumably, you will approve the resolution of the interlocal agreement that the City of Moab will also sign onto. On the 25th of this month, next week, the city will likely sign that authorization resolution, you know, interlocal agreement. On October 2nd, at the first meeting of this body in October, we hope to have another agency meeting where you will approve the project plan and budget. And then, in the county council portion of the meeting, you will actually adopt an ordinance approving that same plan and budget. It's kind of a legal formality there. On October 9th, the city would do the same thing. And then our real deadline is, you know, well, not so much a real deadline, but the next steps are to just get the administrative requirements taken care of, and then to get the interlocal agreements with the participating taxing entities signed. And then, we're pretty much off and done in that one. So, with that said, Adam, do you want to add anything to what I've presented so far?
I'm happy to answer questions, or maybe it's worth adding just a little bit of gloss to this interlocal agreement agenda item. As Zachariah mentioned, this project area includes all unincorporated county land and land within Moab city limits. This is the first of its kind. We pushed a statutory change through during the last legislative session that allows, allows a project area to work this way. Effectively, Moab outsorts its redevelopment activities to the county redevelopment agency. And that's what this interlocal agreement does. Basically gives, gives this entity the ability to pursue, I guess we call it, project area development activities within Moab city limits. So effectively, Moab could do the same thing through its own redevelopment agency. The interlocal agreement is essentially outsourcing that effort and that activity to the county agency in this particular project area.
Questions?
And I assume you've worked with the city in developing these agreements, so they're on board?
Okay. And so we, you, if I understand this right, we will be, you would like us to adopt the resolution tonight?
Yeah, so the, to stick with this timeline, you would adopt the resolution tonight. That would be the first, you know, action I'd have on the agenda. And then, you are also, you're gonna hold a public hearing so that members of the public can provide written or oral comments on the project area plan and budget. But you're not yet adopting.
Do we have any questions? Yes, Evan?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I move to adopt the proposed resolution of the Grand County Community Reinvestment Agency approving an interlocal agreement with Moab City, authorizing that agency to conduct project area development activities within the city, and authorize the Chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Evan Clapper? Seconded by Jaylen Hawks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call, yes.
You know that I noticed typos, so.
Yes, good.
I did notice a few, but I will send them to you by email. They're insignificant, but I will send them.
Get those taken care of.
She's, she's the Pam Hackley of the solid waste board. Yes?
I also didn't see the levels of contributions spelled out in the presentation outlined in the agreement. Does that come now, or is that at a different stage?
Those are listed in the project plan and budget.
Oh, in the big packet. Gotcha, okay. Yeah, and this is, this will be presumably the, this interlocal agreement just authorized the agency to exercise its powers within Moab City. We expect a number of other interlocal agreements that deal specifically with the finance and the flow of dollars. Okay, that's, I see.
Any other questions? Seeing my, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We are now opening, starting the public hearing. Public hearing to solicit public comment on proposed Moab South Community Reinvestment Project Area Plan and Budget. Zachariah Levine?
Okay, so I'm not planning on doing a whole lot of talking here. I will just note that in your packet you do have a draft of the project area plan and budget, and much of the language in here is just to deal with statutory requirements of the Title 17(c), the Community Reinvestment Agency Act. What I would just draw your attention to is, once again, the boundaries of, the boundaries of the project area, the budget, and then what the money can be spent on. So first off, just bring up the boundaries again. So these are the proposed project area boundaries. Comprises the land designated for USU Moab development, several commercial properties, and then a handful of higher density housing, or higher density residential parcels, some of which already have entitlements in place. The project area budget is this spreadsheet in your packet. Zoom in enough just to kind of walk you through it. So, basically, this shows you the base year taxable value based on a market study, a projection of what new development could occur over a 20-year period, year by year, and the associated incremental tax revenue that that would bring in. And then, based on the contributions that I've worked with taxing entities to arrive at, again, year by year, you can see how much tax increment would go to the project area year by year. And then in these first two columns, the total over the 20-year period. And then, if you were to bring that into net present value because of the time value of money, you have to discount that. In today's dollars, it would represent a little bit less, about two-thirds. So, that is the spreadsheet that has been used to establish the CRA budget. As I've said in the past, I will also note that there is some money removed for project area activities for administrative costs, and then a 10% allocation for housing, because state law requires that if an agency brings in more than $100,000 a year, it has to spend 10% of its revenue on housing. That is part of state code. And so, in my opinion, you could look at that housing line item for the budget as just being part of the agency's operating budget, because it's also part of the project area plan. So, that's what I will switch to now, is to show you the plan. And I'm just going to advance directly to the project area goals. Should be section six.
Section six.
Yeah. So you can see, and the reason this is important is because when all of the taxing entities sign interlocal agreements with the agency, everyone is committing to the project plan and what that money would be spent on. And so, that's laid out in this document. The money can only be spent on projects that are related to the development of moderate income and essential workforce housing, the establishment of new business, the development of a USU campus, and other public infrastructure improvements deemed necessary to support growth in that area. So, you know, of all of the ways that money could be spent, they have to be tied to these four project area planning goals. So, there aren't questions for Adam or myself. I think, you know, we do open it up to the public who may be here to provide comments.
Yes, Jaylen?
Are there any taxing entities that opted not to participate?
All of the taxing entities who collect property tax have chosen to participate in the project area, which I think is important and indicative of, you know, a broad level of support for this effort, and for, in particular, for the goals set forth in this plan and document. I know that we have some members of some of the other taxing entities here with us, they may not be here to speak, but, you know, should something come up and it makes sense, we do have some members in this room.
Any further questions from the council? I will open this up to the public for this portion of the public hearing. If you would like to address the council, I ask you to come forward, state your name, and then keep your comments, try to keep them at three minutes or under. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to comment during this public hearing? So this public, oh, did I see somebody?
I can't see you, Mary.
I can't see you either.
Okay, I'm Jim Webster. I'm on the Board of Education for Grand County. We're one of the entities that are participating in this. I just wanted to say that we've been working together with Zachariah and our board, as well as the other folks, the professionals that have come down and assisted on this. I think that really, this is a, sort of a big step for this county and this community to do something like this. And our thoughts are that although we would forego some property tax revenue, particularly in the short term, that this will, and our hope, and the thought is it will kickstart development in that area. And- And over time, the generation of property values would go up sooner than they might had nothing like this been done. So we support this, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? This is like a normal public hearing, it will stay open. Okay, this public hearing will remain open until September 26 at 5:00. You may email the county or bring in a written letter if you wish to comment. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Long and Zachariah Levine. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to leave you with an invitation. If you have questions about process, general approach, anything having to do with redevelopment, please feel free to call, text, email, come visit. Anything I can do to help you understand the process, I'm happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would entertain.
Motion.
Motion by Evan Clapper.
Second.
Seconded by Jaylen Hogs. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you say yes, Curtis? Did we lose him?
It's a possibility we may have lost him. He did say he's traveling.
Okay, so.
He also didn't have the.
Then it passed five to zero. Yes?
I was just saying, he also has been able to watch this during, through the YouTube streaming. So he's been watching it live and participating live.
Oh, there he is. Can't understand a word he's saying. Okay.
I vote aye to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, passes six to zero. We will now open the Grand County Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, September 18, 2018. I would like the pledge of allegiance. Sherri Buckingham, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll put my agenda, put this one down. Okay, minutes, do we have any?
I move to postpone the approval of minutes from July 18, July 30, August 7, October 20, August 21, and September 4.
Motion by Evan Clapper. Seconded by Jaylen Hogs. All in favor of postponing the minutes from July 18, July 30, August 7, 21, and September 4? All in favor?
Aye.
Curtis, did you, passes six to, or five to zero. Ratification of payment of bills.
All right. Grand County bills to be approved for 9/18/2018. Total bills, $739,696.96. Total payroll, $228,044.68. Total bills and payroll, $967,645.64.
Motion, payment of bills by Rory Paxman, seconded by Evan Clapper. Roll call vote. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Jaylen Hogs?
Yes.
Evan Clapper?
Yes.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Rory Paxman?
Yes.
Curtis Wales?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, six to zero. We will now move to general council reports and future considerations. Greg Halliday?
On the 6th of September, I attended the Moab Area Housing Task Force. The chair, Cicon, resigned, so we're looking to come up with a new chair for that. Worked on the assured housing policy. There was no update on that. Well, the advocacy group did not have an update. Public outreach did not update. But we did update our letter that's going to go in and support assured housing. That's all I've got on that one. Thompson, that's the Thompson Water Board. They hired two temporary workers due to medically incapacitation of their current operator. That'll just require temporary time until he's back physically able to do it. The water collection area, there were some stumps removed. They're planning to do some root removal out of the pipes. They exercised all their valves and hydrants, and currently they are in OSHA compliance, so we don't have to worry about that. Transportation Special Service District, they did some work on Murphy Lane. We're doing test strips. Whenever the federal government wants to pay something, they have to have a test strip done, and it has to be approved. Well, rather than just do it someplace that nobody cares about, we've been having them do it on Murphy Lane, and then it gets checked off, and we get it for a much cheaper amount than if we hadn't done it directly. So we've done that a number of times already, so we're in the process of putting a new surface on that, on that road. We did some work up in Thompson in the old 650. We chipped it from one end of town to the other, and also up the Sagal Canyon Road to the old schoolhouse. Currently, we're, the Special Service District has recommended doing, probably rechipping the Loop Road from 128 up above Castleton where it ties in with what the feds paid for last year up on the Loop Road. Looking at doing some work on the Hastings Road up by Green River, and we're doing a, planning on doing a bridge deck seal on a bridge up in Thompson. Another meeting that I attended was the catastrophic fire meeting. That was on the 12th of September up in Green, up in Green River. They've completed the west slope. They're getting ready to complete the Phase Two of that process. I want everybody to understand, and you're probably all aware of this, this is one of the worst fire seasons in the history of the state. The west slope, the Phase One has been completed. They're currently working on the Phase Two. Willow Basin, they finished the retreatment of that area. They're going in there and doing a little more finishing up on that. And that's all we got on the catastrophic fire. Historic Preservation Committee, I attended that on the 14th. We did not have a quorum, so we were not able to have an official meeting. However, Dave Vaughn took us to the side of the Elk Mountain Mission, which is down behind Motel 6, and you, and from there we could see what was left of the old walls of that, of that mission. So it was interesting to do that, and that's all I got.
Thank you, thank you, Greg. Jaylen?
Yes.
We continue, I sound like a broken record, to meet as a budget advisory board, and we continue to review revenues and department budgets. I believe on tomorrow's agenda, we'll be reviewing proposals for the efficiency study that's been in the works for quite a while. And I did see an email inviting the council to meet with us during the month of October in preparation for the tentative budget proposal in early November. And I hope you can all make that because they're great meetings, aren't they, Evan?
They are.
I'm going to let Housing Authority of Southeastern Utah speak for themselves today through our good director, Ben, and his report. Something we haven't heard a lot about, at least from this council lately, is the Intergenerational Poverty Initiative. You may recall that over a year ago, we put together a top-notch team of community agency leaders, nonprofit leaders, government leaders, and they were charged with coming up with deliverables to help address the intergenerational poverty effort in Moab in Grand County. And that kind of, it didn't fizzle out. It's been on the back burner, but with lack of funding and lack of a point person to make sure it all happens, it's definitely been a back burner project. The school district has recently hired a person who, I believe her title's Community Liaison Coordinator. I met with her. She is fantastic. She is meeting with many of those same people that were on that committee. The district is really on top of trying to figure out why kids in Grand County might be experiencing difficulty and even failing in school. And they are gracious enough to let us tag onto that and address, I think the two issues are going hand in hand. So very excited about that. I met with Zach, Tracy, and JT from the State Intergenerational Poverty Effort. I think that they were going to meet with this coordinator, her name's Mallory, and I expect to see great things happening in that area. I, for the first time in about a year, I'm optimistic that things are really going to move along.
That's good news.
Thank you. Evan?
I've had a busy week as well. On Monday, I met with EMS Special Service District. It's a great board, moving and shaking. We're going to hear more from them tonight, so I won't get into it too much. Also, what met with Moab Mosquito Abatement District, and we reviewed, once again, our contribution layers, levels to the CRA that we just discussed, as well as whether or not to participate in a truth in taxation this year. And the district has decided, there's been some additional funding that was made available through grants that will cover a lot of the kind of technological needs. And so there's, they're not going to do a truth in taxation this year. On Tuesday, I met with Trail Mix. We're going to hear from them again tonight, so I won't get into it too much. Lively meeting as always, nice and long. There's a swear jar that's $5 anytime the word "e-bike" is mentioned, and we must have raised $500 or $600 that day. So you should scoot your little battery power down and visit with us. Let's see, also on Tuesday, I met with the Cemetery Board, and their new sprinklers are installed at Sunset Memorial Gardens, and they're doing great. So big water conservation efforts being made there. They also have the added benefit of requiring less labor hours to adjust those, so that was great. We also had, it was the first meeting attended by our new board member that we appointed before, Norm. And I love having Norm out there because every time he walks in the building, I get to go, "Norm!" And there is motion being made to erect a columbarium, which will be a nice benefit for county members that are wanting to keep their loved ones in the cemetery with reduced costs. So exciting news there. From the cemetery, let me check my calendar, make sure I'm not forgetting anybody. Then Wednesday, I met with the budget advisory board, as Jaylen said. Thursday was Sand Flats. We reviewed a lot of their 2018 budget as well as 2019 budget, highlighted some projects that are coming down the pipe. They're also looking at a campground expansion in Campground D and a partial reroute of fins and things, so that that is not going through Campsite E. Some new shade structures planned for next year, as well as some more group sites. They have online reservations now through the same government site BLM uses, and that's been really good for them to be able to plan accordingly, collect fees, et cetera, et cetera. And users really appreciate being able to have a campsite reserved before they show up.
Excuse me, that would be for group sites only?
Correct, group sites only, but there's more group sites coming online, so. There's a, the BLM is looking at a pilot program in Arizona where they're looking at individual site reservations, and so far, it looks like it's working really well down there. And the BLM might be adopting something up here, and Sand Flats tends to follow their suit. BLM is raising the campsite fees for next season, but Sand Flats will not be raising the fees yet. Sand Flats charges per vehicle, whereas the BLM, you're allowed multiple vehicles per site. I also met with the library board and went through their budget stuff and art acquisition policies and another director's report. They also have a new shade structure going in at the library, which is going up. And as you know, the Utah Film Circuit is no longer partnering with the library, but this month, the library is showing, it's banned book month, if you missed the memo, and they're showing books that have been banned. They're showing movies that are based on books that were once banned. So, you know, some of these hot items like Bridge to Terabithia, and these really taboo sort of movies are being shown at the library this month. And I better just stop.
It's getting too interesting. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. To begin with, just a reminder, they're having the open house for the Christmas Box House this Friday from 10 to 2. And the author, Evans, who wrote the book which inspired the Christmas Box Houses throughout the state, will be there. He's an excellent speaker and an amazing gentleman, so I hope many people show up for that to support our family children's shelter. Also, I wrote these down, even this is not in order, on October 2, I will be doing a tour with the Sovereign Lands at Willow Springs to maybe work on a partnership similar to the ones with Sand Flats. And if a council member would like to join us, it will be from 9:30 to 12:00, and I would love to have another.
With an Dalton Wells?
Dalton Wells, Dalton Wells.
Yeah.
What's the date?
It's on our next, our next meeting to, so it'll be in the morning so we can get through. But I think it's very exciting because the place is getting trashed, and it'd be nice to be proactive and get on it faster than we got on the Sand Flats area and provide some protection for that area. So those are, those are some updates and some things I've been working on. I am now a member of the National Counties Association of Public Health, and I had my first teleconference with the people that are on that committee. And let me tell you, teleconferencing is very fun, isn't it, Curtis?
Yeah.
Anyway, they talked a lot about the, if the possible change in the federal landscape in Washington DC and how that would affect health and the lawsuits that are going on in Texas that could bring an end to the Affordable Care Act. So it was, it was interesting. It lasted about 30 minutes. So that was one of the meetings. We also had the, I met with the Grand County Local Homeless Coordinating Committee. We also had, I met with the Grand County Local Homeless Coordinating Committee, and Ben's going to be talking about some of the things that went on there. And at that, and we have a letter that Zachariah gave to me today in support of Ms. Ben Riley. "On behalf of the Grand County, I'm pleased to provide this letter to commit to lending $3,054,605, the principal indebtedness, to the projects located on 318 South Willow Tree Road, Moab, Utah." I'll let Ben explain it more, but, you know, I will sign this, and we can ratify it at our next meeting. They also talked about at the Homeless Coordinating Committee, the work of having the database up and running, getting it up and running, and how that's going to really help us deal with our homeless population. I will stop short. It will take a long time to go through everything we went on in that meeting. The thing that the Grand Conservation District Meeting, which I went on the 11th, the thing that I took away from that, that people might be interested in, is the severity of our drought. Our surface water in Grand County is at 9%, which is one of the lowest in recorded history. Our precipitation for the year is at 53%, and our soil moisture is only 21%. If people want to have more information on that, go to the Utah Climate and Water Report. Just Google that, and the report will come up. It's quite fascinating. It shows many years in the process. We also had a solid waste special district board meeting, in which we reduced the cost to the city for working on mitigation of the area by the bus shed. That was one of the main points of conversation. I also met with a person, Tina Merzer, from the state. She is in charge of recycling tires, and I'm working with her. If we can get things set up, we can have tires in our county that our people wish to get rid of, or in areas where they have stockpiled them, and there are areas, if you've driven around this county, that people have stockpiled, and the state will pay 60% of the removal, and the county, and the public partnerships would spend 40%. So, I'm looking at getting that done. I also found out that if we have any properties that have been abandoned since around the early 2000s, the state will clean them up for us at 100%. So, that would be great. So, I'm working with the Health Department and other areas to find areas in the town, communities that may have been abandoned that are a health and safety hazard. Driving around our community with her to see the areas where people were stockpiling tires was, to say the least, depressing. There were a couple areas that I think are, should be condemned. They are such public health district, you know, health problems. It's really sad to see. So, we did, I did that. And then the Manti, went to the Manti La Salle National Forest Plan Revision today in Price. So, it's been a busy day. And it was fascinating. It's been in the process of being developed for two years. Very thorough process, agencies from all over the area where the Manti La Salle National Forest are, as it gets closer. And when I get the notes from that meeting, I will report more on what I learned, or what's happened at that meeting. So, that's short, believe it or not. Thank you. Roy?
All right. Well, for Grand County Noxious Weed Control Board, we still have lots of weeds in the county, even though we haven't had any rain. Imagine that. Lots of weeds.
Weeds do.
But the new full-time grant job that we offered, Scott Crookstott, he took it, and then he found another job. So, we're still looking for a seasonal employee there.
Actually, that's full-time year-round, that one is.
Yeah. And then, at the Airport Board, our taxi waste, we're still limiting aircraft to 8,000 pounds, because we've had some ruts in the asphalt there. And we hired two landside operation positions. One was Mark Markham and Liz Zillman. And then we have, we talked about our public hearing for the Airport Better Board Minimum Standards, Public Comment Period Proceedings through Wednesday, September 19th. So, that'll be coming up. What is that, tomorrow?
Tuesday.
Yeah. So, if you have any comments, you want to write the council at grandcountyutah.net. And then, we talked about discussion with Skydive Moab regarding the boogie, which starts tomorrow and goes through the 23rd.
Thank you.
So, it's pretty short.
Thank you. As you can see, the council's very busy. And do you have anything to report, Curtis?
Yeah, I did a report on my trip to EP for the PIL client. So, we, the National Association of County Coordinators, built one, which is, for those in the audience who aren't familiar, payment and blue taxes. And that's a program that offsets forgone property tax revenue due to non-taxable federal lands within our county jurisdiction. And it was a very well-organized series of meetings. We met with over 60 congressional leaders, and it was bipartisan event. We met with the Senate Energy and National Resources Committee Chairwoman Lisa Murkowski, the House National Resources Committee Chairman Rob Bishop, the Senate and Public Works Committee Chairman John Barasso, and Senator Michael Bennett from Colorado. And, you know, really, it was refreshing, because this was very bipartisan, loyal leaders on both sides of the aisle, in the House and Senate. And the key takeaways were that we've emerged temporary and, you know, permanent funding, which has been, both have been advocating for some time. But we get, they're getting the sense that Washington is ready to revisit these agreements. The other issue that we discussed with SRS, which is secure role of schools, and the father of that program is a senator from Oregon, Democrat, by the name of Wyden. He spoke to us and said that they're starting some discussions on how to expand the SRS. The majority of that money stays in Oregon, because that's where the majority of the timber harvest is coming from. But that's also something that's, you know, being worked on, and there's a lot of Senate leadership that are getting older and leaving Wyden and send their hats, and so it's a big part of their legacy to want to improve those programs moving forward. PIL is funded through fiscal year 2019. Excuse me, the funding is set to expire at the end of this month, or in 2018. And so, we're looking for funding for fiscal year 2019. But really, where the discussions tomorrow are focusing on are, what is a long-term solution for the, you know, the absence of SRS funds, which means our PIL funds are being kind of spread thinner across the public lands county nationwide. So, you know, a lot of these discussions are things we debate and have, the federal government not paying their fair share or anything, and TRP on campground, a lot of those issues go away, if the counties are getting their fair share of the payment and blue taxes. So, it was a good experience. We received really good feedback from the members that we met with, and hopefully that will have some positive results. Just a couple of minor things. I did meet, I don't know if you mentioned this, Mary, if I heard you correctly, but I did meet with Councilman McGann and Jill Kingsley, and Caitlin Myers from planning and zoning.
I reported on that last weekend, last week.
Properties that are non-compliant with our county ordinance, as far as junk and refuse. So, you know, we're still kind of fine-tuning some different approaches to bring those folks within compliance. And Joe Kingsley, citizen, has really done a lot of work, and here had an effort to get some more bins around town that's feasible for, you know, some of the local scrap yards to generate revenue by collecting junk, with prices right now on scrap metal. So, hopefully that can fit into our work. And the last thing is, I came to a meeting with San Juan County and UDOT that was very similar to the hotspot meetings that we held late in 2017, and through 2018, you know, where we're identifying projects and areas for UDOT to fund projects that we identified in our process, everyone we remember, like due to the city being awarded to a ten million dollar grant for downtown improvement, and then also some analysis of potential highway rights. San Juan County is looking at marketing kind of Moab style developments, and, you know, I'm listening and making recommendations. So, a lot of what they're looking for is additional access to Highway 191 in the valley, you know, so that, you know, that can aid in their development. I recommend it, you know, then to reach out and discuss with Zachariah, some of those Spanish Valley Drive improvements that we've looked at, and I think that will be added to our plan, transportation plans. But I think moving forward, what I recommend after then is to have staff from the county at ten move meetings. I think that's only the second one that has appeared. And I think that process is turning into a good, you know, channel of communication on, you know, what the development could look like, and how to make it work within the two counties. You know, what UDOT's really going to do, and where to back off this film, and I can't speak to, but they're obviously attempting to do some good planning with the state and with Grand County. And so, the next time that meeting rolls around, I'll recommend for staff to join or take my place and see where those conversations end up. But it's a start, and that's all I have to report on.
Thank you. County Administrator Ruth Dillon.
Oh, well, what I wanted to bring out was the Current Real Estate Magazine. There's a nice article on the arena, if you haven't seen it yet, that is pretty good. It provides some history, too. Is it George M. White, who made some donations early on, and the volunteers who started it for the Equestrians? They are the Equestrians, but it's called From Horses to Jeeps: Old Spanish Trail Arena Over Time. It also goes into, you know, development plans. It mentions something about a plan that sounds like it's a current plan, but it's really years into the future. So, anyway, it's a good article, and thought I'd bring that out to you. Other than that, I've just been doing some, you know, on-the-ground kind of things at the arena, at the Grand Center. Been up to the book cliffs with some noxious weed digging. So, it's been kind of interesting getting really more involved in the departments that I oversee. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Diana?
Can we do this under elected officials' report? The presentation of the audit, we're going to have to postpone until October 16th. That's the first time that audit will be available, and that's, of course, depending upon getting the litigation report from the county attorney, that's what we're waiting for. And then, I'd like to just take, man it if I could. If you recall back in March, House Bill 224 was signed by the governor and went into effect, which immediately set the stage for a few events that occurred within the county. I received a citizen's petition, and you all also adopted a resolution. And I received a letter from the Lieutenant Governor's Office that I'd like to just read to you. I'm going to wait for that. Dear Ms. Carol, our office has worked with our attorney from the Attorney General's Office to provide legal analysis on the issues surrounding HB 224, County Government Change Election Amendments. The question at hand is whether the March 26, 2018 Resolution of the Grand County Council negates the voters' petition to initiate the process to change the county's form of government. The voters filed an application on March 15, 2018, while the council's resolution was pending. We interpret the statute to require that the first initiated process be allowed to run its course. The statute does not allow for a later initiated process to negate or nullify a previously valid initiated effort. The pending proceedings provisions of Part III of the statute makes clear that if the process for changing the form of government has already begun, the first initiated process must be allowed to run its course, and the later initiated process is prohibited. Later efforts to initiate the process, whether by voters or by the legislative body, are prohibited until the first initiated process concludes, see Section 1752A 301 3A. These pending proceedings provisions apply even when either the legislative body or voters had initiated, had begun the process prior to the effective date of HB 224 amendments. And they refer to Section 1752A 104. The express language of these provisions demonstrates the legislative intent to respect the first initiated process of changing the form of county government. In addition to the express language of Part III, this interpretation is supported by the statement of Representative Frere, who is the sponsor of House Bill 224, that whatever process is first should be honored. The highlighted provisions, notes included in the unrolled copy of HB 224 also express the intent to prohibit a person from initiating a process to change a county's form of government when a process is pending, showing the intent to allow the first initiated process by providing grandfather provisions for counties that have initiated the process. The steady question must be on the ballot, but an interpretation that the county's resolution somehow supersedes or otherwise nullifies the prior initiated process is not expressed anywhere in the text of the statute, and would require ignoring the express language of Part III and Section 1752A 104, which also requires application of the first initiated process provisions, which even where that process began before the effective date of House Bill 224 amendments in Section 1752A 104 1B 2. Interpreting the statute to require respect for the first initiated process is a reasonable and workable interpretation. Please let us know how we can address any questions. Sincerely, Justin Lee, Director of Elections.
Justin, what was his name?
Justin Lee.
Can you, can you forward that to the council? I absolutely can, yeah. Thank you. Do I don't see any other elected officials in the audience? Okay, we're finished our elected officials' report. We will now move to department reports. Bill Jackson, Road Department.
Good afternoon. Bill Jackson, County Road Supervisor.
How are you, Kenny? Did I mention shop for him?
So, as you all know, we maintain somewhere in the neighborhood of over 1500 miles, about 15,000, 19,200 feet back. But, so anyhow, 2017, I think, was a real productive year for the Road Department. We had a lot of projects going on. A lot of them were fast-paced, you know, and get really busy. And as you also know, the users, our roads are multifaceted, and so I think... And so I think we've done a really good job of keeping our roads open for users and keeping it in a safe way, not only for our staff, but, you know, the road department, but for the users also. I will say we have a couple of, well, one's been, employee's been there a year, Charlie Ross, and he's developing really, really, really well.
I thought Bill was saying some bad words and we had to blur it out.
Well, we'll talk about that later. But anyway, Barry's has developed real well, learning a lot of new techniques for the road department. He's got his CDL now and moving along nicely. Actually utilized it in our chipping trucks this season and been on the deck of the spreader. So, you know, learning different aspects. And then we also have Barry Sizer, he's in his first year, and he's going along real well too, learning some processes, learning more of our roads and things of that nature. So we have a lot of our staff that we have, not only on the road department, but in the shop, you know, we have several years under their belt, want to put it that way. And they know what they're doing and they don't mind helping somebody out with the big guys and helping them out, kind of showing the girls. So that's really good. So hopefully you have the report. And I will say that we've done quite a bit of work in 2017 in the valley here on Spanish Valley Drive in particular and Santa Plats Road, chipped that, did some overlay on Spanish Valley Drive, about 1.7 miles, chipped that also. And of course, we did some striping, paint striping for safety purposes and things of that nature on those roads and others also. You know, I could go through the whole list and all that if you want me to or if you have a chance to look at it, you got any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
Council, do you have any questions? Mary? Impressive. Yes.
Yes, impressive. I just have two questions. One is, I'm sure it was just a typo on the major flooding that led to the damage of number 50 D7 Dozer in Long Canyon.
Right.
Says you decided to put off repairs until the 2018 year? Did you mean 19?
No.
It's going to be this year? Okay, okay. Good, good.
Rest of the year clicked over, our budget's wide open, we fixed it.
Nice. And my other question is, fire mitigation has led to the purchase of a Ficon masticator for the mitigation of fire fuel. Was that or can it be used as match money in the cat fire? Oh, good. It is and it has been?
And I will, if you don't mind right now, have Cody kind of go through his shop report or have any questions. Just a caveat to that, Cody for his paper performance is, for his IDP, his individual development plan, took on that fire policy. And, you know, of course, I'm involved in it, but, you know, he did a lot of research on the masticator and things of that nature. He talked about projects and whatnot, but here's Cody.
All right. Well, I'm going to be even shorter. So Greg, of course, on the cat fire, you guys all know that too. So Greg, I've been attending these meetings very big and trying to keep all that in order too. But from the shop standpoint, I think you guys have the shop report there for some of the big projects that we've kind of taken on. Some of the stuff that we have in there with some heavy equipment leases and some leases for the sheriff's office, trying to bring in kind of a new array of vehicles to the old fleet, so to speak. But let's not get too down on the good old equipment because I've got three amazing mechanics that seem to just take everything in stride and there's not much that keeps them from getting the job done. They keep that good old equipment in tip top shape so it can serve the county. But that particular D7 Dozer's a 1977. It's a pair with a 1950 cat loaded. It's the two oldest pieces of equipment for the county out of the road parts.
What was the second?
They just still service, boy, they just do their job.
What did you, what was the second date you said?
They're both 1977s.
Okay. Wow.
I have a 1964.
That's not that old, Mary.
You have questions, rest of the earth.
Do you guys have any questions on the projects or anything like that? Masticator, we were able to, in a matter of six weeks, take about two years of the county commitment, complete all that, about six weeks alert.
We can pay ahead on that then, huh?
Yeah, that's a good thing, isn't it?
Yes.
I think there's talk about how far ahead we can do that. So we've got some other projects lined up. And that in mind, I've been contacted by several different entities, if you will, about, in essence, it would have to be leased, that masticator and doing some form of mitigation, somewhere around 279, Highway 279, things like that. I kind of had a feeling that might happen, you know? So we're going to look in to see how we can do that. Really, it's a matter of our, the road department's schedule, you know, have somebody to do that kind of stuff and get reimbursement for it. Just to give you a heads up, that may be coming down. So, no questions. So, anything else?
If I could just give kudos again to this department, but also specifically to Cody for the new fleet policy that we have. He really spearheaded and put a lot of time and energy into that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you both. We are moving to H.
Yes.
I've just said thanks.
Thank you, Ms.
Agency Report. Housing Authority of Southeastern Utah Semiannual Report. Ben Riley, Executive Director.
Hello, everyone. You'll have to excuse me, I've been, I've had a cold the last few days, so I might snip on my way through this report a little bit, but I'll try to go a little bit quicker through the first few items on our report to kind of get to some of the more important, maybe not more important, some of the more pressing items that we have going on right now. Start with our budget and our finances. We did get our audit back in for fiscal year 2017, but no significant findings. That's always a great thing for us because all of our funding sources are based on our review, all of our audits. That's a big deal for us. So not having any findings on our audit or not insignificant, we get a whole small finding, but you know, you can have an audit without any findings. We're halfway through our, almost through halfway our fiscal year for 2019. We'll get our fiscal year 2018 audit done here in the next couple of months, so I should be reporting that next time of year. We are half, we're almost through with our self-help grant nine. And we will, I'll touch on self-help a little bit more in a little bit, but I highlight self-help in the financial section because that and actually increasing needs, development fees from li tech, tax credit projects are becoming, self-help is primarily our budget, our biggest revenue source, but more and more so, development fees and admin fees from li tech projects, loan, loan loans and tax credit projects are becoming more and more a part of our revenue. So that's really good to see because, you know, nobody ever wants to see all their budgetary sources coming from one place. So we're definitely diversifying our revenue sources, which is good. Section eight housing, not much to report there. Our families can get a place to rent, so we subsidize a portion of their rent based on their income. We help about 46, 37 families a month with that. We wait in this for that's about one year. Our Crown rent to own program, we still have 21 homes, eight in San Juan County and 13 in Moab. We do have one of our projects, the Rimel project is going into completion at the end of its 15 year completion this year, at the end of this year. And we'll be looking at a sizable development fee for that. Typically with development, you get the fee upfront, but with Crown, one of the things that's kind of hard to swallow with the Crown program is that you have to wait 15 years to kind of get the payoff for that program. So it's always good to get through 15 years to get that payment. So we're looking at a sizable chunk next year, which is great. So it's restricted for affordable housing leases, which, you know, obviously we all would do, so not a problem there. But we, when we sold the Sage Valley project about five or six years ago, we bought one of those homes and we've maintained it as rentals for five or six years now. We're getting ready to sell that house. We are looking at a de-restriction, a permanent de-restriction on that house and selling it on the open market to an 80%. Me and my family are low, so we have been working with our attorneys to get our de-restrictions. And we've been talking a lot about de-restrictions. We're looking for various programs with, so we're, we've been working on that on our own as well. So looking at that. Cinema Court, not much to report there. They're still 100% occupied, they're 100% occupied as of yesterday, then I talked to Jasmine. We did have an investor visit a few months ago, which was great. It was a great visit, checking our finances and the property, especially right now, when I get into the MAPS project as well as Windy Village, we're courting those investors for those projects as well. So it's always good to have investors come to our projects that we have now listed in the court and see that we're arranging them really well because then we're likely to want to invest in our future projects. So that was, that was great. Virginia Apartments, not much to report there. We did go and go through a slew of tenant issues in the fall and spring of this year, which we've recovered from and small projects like that are sometimes hard to take a lot of time. An issue, one thing I learned about property management is that it can take a lot of time and time and money and heartache when you have, when things go wrong. So things have been pretty easygoing, I would say, for the most part for the last six months, which has been great. It definitely frees me up and my staff up to do other projects, which is, which when you have a three-person office like we do. Our self-help program, we're continuing to build in the value subdivision. We'll have completed 20 units on Bonina Street across from Palmer House Lane. We're working on eight more right now. When it's all said and done, we'll have done 28 out of 32 homes in that subdivision. Another great example of having all the self-help homes or a whole multiple projects in one subdivision, it really frees me up, especially to two other projects when I'm not consistently hunting around for self-help, especially when it's such a big funding source for us. So we'll be finishing that at the end of this year. Our next group is actually landing. We'll be giving five homes in landing to finish our grant nine, close to finish our grant nine before we start in grant 10. I'll be working on grant 10 this winter and into the spring of next year. We'll be starting probably another group of 20 or another grant of 20 homes in 2019. So again, that's one of our biggest funding sources, so we keep it tight and we've done tighten it on that. It's, we've done a good job overlapping our groups a lot better than we have in the past. So we should track to finish that grant early, which is great as far as keeping that funding source happy. On the new development front, MAPS, MAPS Senior Living, we did get funded with tax credits in December. It's been quite a roller coaster since then. It's a 36 unit senior apartment complex north of the hospital, part of the Healthcare Special Service District and many other partners on that. I say it's been a roller coaster because once we were awarded tax credits, the price of tax credits plummeted shortly thereafter because of the tax law change, the cover of tax rate, which is what tax credits are based on, went down from 30% to 20% or whatever it was, which reduced the amount of price we get for tax credits. We've had, spent the entire summer going to secondary funding sources and gaining secondary funding sources. So we were hoping, you know, in the usual process, you break around, you know, about a year after you're awarded or maybe a little bit less than that. So, you know, the world is a bit boring, a bit building, but with the tax law change and the price of tax credits and having to essentially refinance the entire project, we've been working on that. But I think we have all of that solved now, I hope. I'm literally talking to investors right now to finalize our financing and we've actually seen the price of tax credits go up a little bit from what we initially, you know, we initially priced them really high, tax credits plummeted, and now they're going back up slowly but surely. So we're happy that we might get a little bit more than we not initially thought, but after the initial thought, you know, came about. So we're looking at a build date now, probably spring 2019, after we close on the financing with whatever syndicator we go with. And I'm still working through the city's process to get the subdivision finalized and everything. So we're looking at a construction date of spring in 2019 for that. We're also working on the Windy Village, talk about tax credit application. Our application for tax credits to do in less than two weeks. So I've been feverishly working on that application, which this will be the first time that I've kind of put through the whole application by myself. So MAPS, we had a quite a bit of consultant help. We have a partner on the Windy Village, but I've been pretty much doing the application solo. So it's quite a learning experience and it's definitely been, I'm anxiously awaiting October 1st to come and submit the application. So just to touch on, before I forget, your letter that Mary touched on at future considerations. The county was awarded a CDBG grant in the spring of this year for $354,000, something like that. So the county's already been awarded that money, it's for Windy Village. We initially had submitted that application for the whole subdivision for water, sewer, drainage improvements. We are hoping to use that money as a source, so a source of funds for the tax credit project. It definitely hugely increases our likelihood of getting tax credits if we can bring money in from outside sources. So what this letter is doing is using that money that has already been awarded to the county and actually another benefit to the county and loaning it to our project if we're awarded tax credits. We're going to use the money for the subdivision regardless or for the purposes regardless, but by allowing us to use this as a source on our tax credit application, we can bring more money in as a match for tax credits and therefore do more permanently affordable, you know, town home units there. So the other benefit to that is that typically for tax purposes, it's best if you loan that money to the project. So not only, it's a grant from the state to the county, but we are asking that they loan that to us as a cash flow loan. So you wouldn't, it would be amortized at a 30-year amortization rate, but it would be a cash flow loan, so it'll only pay back as cash flow allows. So typically, we did this with Cinema Court. We have a CBG loan for the MAPS project and we've been surviving, not surviving, but we've been cashing off of the CBG loan, the loan to the Cinema Court project 10, five, six, seven years ago now, and we've been getting paid back that regularly with interest. So it's been a boon for us and I think it's a great opportunity for the county to take money that you've already been awarded, awarded to our project again in a way, and then realize an income over the years on that. So it's really a win for everyone. So I did draft a letter, similar letter that we use for the MAPS project that basically says the county will loan us that money that you've already been given and then we'll pay that back with cash flow over the 15 years or so that it takes to pay that back. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I've worked with Zach Ryan a lot on that, so he understands that really well. So.
Can I just jump to the book quickly? So just to be clear, this isn't, you know, $354,000 of the money out of like the county's general funds. This is money that the state awarded to the county through CDBG and is being leveraged to get a much larger, you know, amount of money from different funding programs in a way that is leveraged, is that it's shown as a loan from the county to the project. But I want to make sure that you're all very clear, this is not, you know, unbudgeted money. It's not, you know, local taxpayer money. This is federal money that's being leveraged, or state money that's being leveraged from federal tax program.
That you've already been awarded.
So it gives us an opportunity to generate some interest on that loan, which is not, which is, you know, a small, but still, you know, a source of cash flow.
If we are awarded tax credits, I won't put that caveat in there too. So this is a match for funds. So we are, I have to work on a tax credit application that is very, very competitive. I always emphasize that because especially this is a small project, it's only 22 units, three, four veterans. Typically, they like to see larger projects, they score better. So, you know, we're going into this kind of relatively unknown, but, you know, with a match of funds certainly helps. So, you know, we're going into this kind of relatively unknown, but, you know, with a match of funds certainly helps. So there's a lot of things going for us, but we would only require a loan if we're awarded tax credits. If we're not awarded tax credits, we would use that grant in the same way that we might for, which would be to do the sewer, water, and drainage improvements for the development. Go on. I did include in your packet some drawings, just, you know, I just like to include drawings just because they're pretty. I have a picture of a plat. I know we, I've talked a couple times about submitting the preliminary plat for Windgate Village. That process kind of got pushed into the tax credit season for me, which is July 3 now. And all of my focus kind of turns in a way. So before that, we'll turn our attention back to the preliminary plat and going through the whole subdivision process once the tax credit application is done. I also included a permanent site plan for the MAPS project. It's still very preliminary, and I also included some drawings of some potential art special drawings for the townhomes at Windgate Village. So the only other thing that I wanted to touch on in my report is the Assured Housing and the HDH and also the CRA, which I actually, I'm sorry, I've been kind of stuck in a hole with the tax credit. I didn't realize that that was moving as swiftly as it was. But I definitely want to applaud you all for taking the initiative to do, you know, the Assured Housing, High Density Housing Overlay, and the CRA that can be a great investment because those are all certainly primary funding sources for projects like mine. You know, we're talking about matching funds for tax credits. You know, these are the types of things that I can request from the council. You guys can get through these various funding sources to helping match tax credits and other funding sources, which greatly improves my chances to get funding for housing projects. So I wanted to say thank you for, you know, going through the effort with all of these policies. And I also wanted to, you know, say that the Housing Authority, we did submit a letter saying that we are interested and willing to coordinate with the city and the county for Assured Housing as well as the High Density Housing Overlay to be a contracted agent. If you guys desire to be an entity to qualify applicants to overseeing restrictions, all the types of ongoing issues with that. And we, you know, those are the type of things that we do every day. So, you know, once the policy is confirmed, you ask and you have any questions for us and how it would be played out in practice, I'd be happy to answer those. And that's all I have for my report. So if you have any questions.
Questions? Thank you. Very, once again, very impressive. Thank you very much.
Crushing.
We need to, excuse me, as was said before, I need a motion to postpone item F, the presentation of the 2017 Grand County Financial Report and Audit.
So moved.
Moved by Evan Clapper.
Second.
Seconded by Rory Paxman. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Sorry. Sorry for that. We are now two citizens to be heard. This is an opportunity for the citizens to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, but something that you would like to bring to the attention of the council. If you have an item on the agenda that you wish to speak to, fill out this card and hand it to Diana and Ruth, and they will get it to me. These cards are on, right next to the door. Do we have any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we will move to presentations. Separate presentations on ongoing financial needs and obligations for purposes of later determining funding allocations. Grand County School District.
I'm Robert Flarnsworth and the business administrator of the Grand County School District. Particularly I am junior minister, Boardman. And Sherry Buckingham, who one of her many titles is the preschool director. So we're here to make our annual request for the state fund funds. The past five years, we have received 50% of those funds. A few years ago, we uncovered a need in our district, and we'll let Sherry explain that.
Well, I know all of you probably are, throughout, over time, have heard the childcare issues that are in our community, particularly for very young children. The history of Grand Preschool was always, formerly the Sunwell Education Center, was always to... We were required by federal law to provide for students who have been identified with an early intervention process as being developmentally delayed. And that has been the only population that we have been able to provide services to. How many years ago? Four years ago now?
Four.
Four years ago, the board had been looking for quite a long time at the priority of expanding that. And we discovered, when we started to look at what populations were out there that were really in between spots. There's a target population that if you are not, if you don't have a child that is identified with a developmental delay and you're low enough income, your preschooler can attend Head Start. That's very restrictive in terms, the income has to be quite low. And then there was nothing in the next income bracket, the next one up. So for parents who made too much money to be able to have the eligible for their students to attend Head Start, but did not make enough money to have their children attend preschool in one of our private preschools, was a pretty substantial group of people. So that is the population that we have been targeting. And a lot of these parents worked two and three jobs in order to get enough money to... They really have to do it in order to keep roots over their heads, but it puts them out of that bracket. So we are hitting kids that are of families that are in intergenerational poverty that is a gap that has been not addressed. And those are some of our highest risk kids. Maybe not, maybe a next level out of the Head Start kids, but we have been able to capture that population, which has been a need for many years. We're back from 1997, but I'm just getting on board. Especially with that director back, like, at Saturn P., we have that conversation brought up. So we are capturing that population, as many of them as we can. We have a waiting list. We are implementing research-based practices there with a curriculum that has been research-based. We're participating in another pilot this year for expanded extended alphabet knowledge. And our data coming out of the school looks really, really good. So it's been a good investment.
So, yeah, if I could just kind of jump on what Sherry was talking about. The school board has been looking at, looking for years about how to get more children ready for kindergarten. There are an awful lot of families in this town that have the resources that they could pay one of the great little preschools we have in this town. There are a number, there are an awful lot of parents who have no financial resources or don't even, some people know how to navigate to try to get one of their children into a preschool. The school district preschool, which serves developmental delay as well as today, gets their... Not, yeah, typical, but that are not able to get into a private school, private preschool. Those are, are a part of a lot of kids that we're targeting. We've been using, had a grant from the state for some time.
Ten.
Yep, ten grand. Have needed to match some of that, and that's part of what we were using the fifth grant for. And maybe the secure rural schools, we're using it. So it's been really a big, it's been a good fit for the need that this community has. We were talking about interracial poverty and some of the things that the school district is working on right now to try to get families better integrated into the school system for everybody's benefit, especially those kids.
And we really are, I think, kind of, we serve as much, as a broader network in terms of being able to plug families into other resources that are just sort of part of where we normally look for resources for children at risk who are K-12. But the district does that as a matter of course, and we've been able to do that now for a younger population and start with the intervention of families earlier. So it's a little bit of a unique niche that is, that necessarily doesn't always happen with a private preschool.
I also think it's critical to point out, while there have been some grants here and there, there's no ongoing state or federal funding. We've also been able to provide busing, which helps out to the community. If we're short a bus driver at the beginning of the year, cut that run, it will ask for students. They'll look back in, they can pass, so there's a need there, transportation. Any questions?
Questions?
Oh, it's a good fit. I mean, you know, the county is stepping up and helping the school district make this happen.
And so you're requesting the same levels? Is that the...
Just 50% of the state.
Well, thank you for seeing a need and addressing it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Emergency Medical Service Special Service District.
Madam Chair, if I could draw your attention to the dais, there are a number of documents that were also emailed out to you all today for the EMS SSD.
Well, the school board, John, I would like that 50% of the... Just kidding, remember?
I must be over here.
I have pictures. Hopefully it'll be somewhat interesting.
The Gori ambulance pictures?
Sure, if that's what you want. No. Yeah, sorry. So you guys did get that paper. I just wanted to make sure that those... Yeah, you don't need to look at all of that in your paperwork there, there's a lot of pages. But those are the lists of the, those who are not billed that had an 84532 area code. Those who were billed, sorry, that did not have an 84532 area code, what the bill amount was and what was paid on those invoices. So the EMS department, I'm Andy Smith, I'm the director for Grand County EMS, but I'm requesting stuff for the special service district. So I just want to point out, one of the reasons why funding is needed this coming year, 2019 specifically, is some large capital purchases that need to happen that have been delayed, as well as ongoing capital buildings. And that's a whole nother ball of wax that we'll come and address with you guys later. But what are we going to do about a facility and how are we going to deal with that? So those are the two reasons why we have a projected deficit of $406,000 next year. Just a quick overview of income for the district and how it's fared over the year. The blue is, or for the county, sorry, for the county and then eventually the district, how it's fared over the year. So the green is the sales tax, healthcare sales tax that went into place in 2017. That's done a great job in assisting us in filling the need for people in our department, which we'll discuss here in a minute. And then expense overview, you can see where we're way out of whack with people. So salaries and benefits is that blue line, that top line. All the other expenses are kind of growing at a standard rate, around 6% a year and 6% to 7% a year. But salaries and benefits has made a 157% increase since 2016. And there's some reasons for that we'll discuss there. So why, first of all, it took us six years to increase our call volume by 200. It's now only taken us three years, about half the same, about half the same amount of time to increase by that number of calls. So initially from 2009 to 2015, we only went up 200 calls. And then from then on, obviously, we were going to be up significantly more. We're projected to hit 1,280 calls this year, which is quite a large jump from, I think we were 1130 last year, 1131. It took eight years before that 2009 date to increase by 200 calls. And then, as you can see, this is our call volume versus our expense, just kind of overlaid on each other. Expenses are growing for human capital, for people's salaries and benefits. A lot of that's due, those of you who have copies of the assessment or have read it, you know why that's happening. We're losing volunteers, they're not able to get as much time. As our call volume continues to increase, people just can't be gone 24/7. Our crews are running nonstop all the time, so... This is my favorite, I have the funnest doing this. Which country do you think owes Grand County the most in unpaid bills? Which country, which country?
Germany.
No, they do owe us money, but not that much. It, of course, is our very own, so... The United States is the lowest payer when it comes to tourism. We collect, yeah, they owe us the most. The next is unknown, and the reason that it's unknown is, these are people, and it's funny that we collect $13,000 on calls that we don't know who they bill to. Because a lot of times what happens is we'll collect something while the person is in the country, they leave the country. We may only know their name and maybe their city. But if we don't have a confirmed address, we call it unknown, so those are unknown folks. The UK is next, they don't owe us that much, but a little bit. Canada, next, so filled that well. Germany, next, 507 bucks. The good news is, is that there are a few countries who don't owe us anything, so that's really nice. There's a few of them. So you'll notice that the biggest region that's left out here, and it's because it's the hardest to bill, is Asia. We do not collect almost anything from Asia. It's very, very difficult to bill anybody in that area, either in China, Japan. It's very, very difficult, and that's a lot of that unknown, our Asian... It's just one of those difficult things to try and collect across the nation, so... So our total that tourists did not pay, this is 2017, is $317,000. So my request is essentially, we're just requesting 10% of available TRT mitigation monies. And the reason being that that was kind of what was presented, that is what was presented to the council in October 2017, when the district was slated for creation. You know, throughout that whole process, all the documentation that we provided was that TRT funds would be needed to continue to move that, move the district forward. We are hoping that collections and things like that catch up as call volume increases. Of course, that means more money for the district or the department, but it also means more operational expenses. So our overtime budget this year has, it's almost doubled right now. Might even be, with the last figure, it might be double. And that's simply we can't keep up. We're up 19% as of like yesterday, so that's all I have.
That's it?
That's it.
Questions?
I have a question. So you had a slide that showed the cost, personnel and benefits costs going up and up and up. And I know there are some very good reasons for that. You've touched on some of them. One of them, I don't know that you touched on specifically, but the department staff have been seriously underpaid for quite a while. So we're catching up on that. And also, you've been running the department with volunteers, which is not sustainable.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, since we're catching up on those two things in theory and on paper, do you expect that line up there to kind of level out?
Yeah, if I was to take that another three years, you would... Yeah, if I was to take that another three years, you would see it stopped at about 1.2. But the truth is, those numbers are not an increase in pay or any staff. So those are numbers before we've added any additional pay increases to the budget.
That's why you didn't touch on that.
Yeah, the truth is, the district just can't afford to do so. And, you know, it's sore needed with a lot of our staff, but the truth is that they just can't afford to pay them anymore. We do need to add another full-time person, and that's included in that number. That would take our total staff. So you can see exactly where it started. 2016, I came in and requested that we use some of the EMS fund balance to hire three people. The reason being is I was, you know, 20, 30 hours of overtime a week. And it just wasn't sustainable for me anymore. And, or the rest of the department that was pitching in. And so as we've transitioned to this full-time department, we now have 12 full-time individuals, including myself. And that's exactly where that line ended, is down that way, but those numbers is not an increase in pay increases.
Thank you.
Anything else? I don't have any more pictures for you.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. Transportation Special Service District.
I'm Jay Keel, and I'm a board member on the Transportation Special Service District. When I joined the district close to five years ago, the board was saving money. We saved enough money to acquire a matching CIB grant and then acquire enough federal money to complete the rebuild of the Grand County portion of the Loop Road. This project is now real close to complete, if not completed. And it totals about $10 million. At the same time, we were able to continue with ship seal rotation on oil grubs in Grand County and are continuing our participation to this day. We also participated with Grand County on improvements to some of our Hawaiian gravel grubs. As Greg mentioned, over the last two years, we purchased several test strips from state highway projects. We applied last year, we applied leveling courses to Spanish Valley Drive. And this year, we've been applying them to Murphy Lane. Looking forward to 2019, a UDOT inspection of the Thompson Bridge indicates that a top seal is needed for proper preservation on that bridge. The Transportation District would like to participate with Grand County on this project in 2019. We'd also like to continue participating on this ship seal rotation in 2019, which, including the Hastings Road, gets due if not asked to. Heavy traffic on the San Flats Road and the Canyon Creek Road is causing some deterioration. We'd like to participate with dust control and some spot repairs on these roads. The Transportation District would also like to plan towards acquiring match money for another large project, such as the surface rebuild of the Cassavala Road or the Canyon Creek Road. Grappling Taylor Flats Road and the Gateway Way Road would be good projects for the Transportation District to participate on. Other future projects would include the Attraia Ranch Road. Fisher Towers Road has had work on it recently. It's not overdue for anything probably. The Old Highway 615 on both sides of Thompson and the bridges are going to be cemented in the future. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions? You get to, anyway? And what are you asking? Same as last year? I can't remember. I think I read it, but I don't remember.
Last year, what we got is pretty marginal. We lost 2/3 of what we were getting the year before last. We've been getting $3,000 to $4,000 most months. Seems like a couple months, maybe not. So it is marginal as to what we'll be able to do in the future. We could be saving quite a while just to do a bare minimum. In the last, in the last month, we put down $64,000 for the ship seal. The county is also participating in that. So it's, working on the roads is a very expensive process. We're getting close to having depleted our savings from time to time. I guess we just have to leave that entirely up to the council.
Thank you.
We'd like whatever you have as a little consideration.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn for five minutes before we begin our action items.
Call that a recess.
Recession. Recession. Excuse me, now the adjourn. Does anyone?
So moved.
Do you have a second? All in favor? Five minutes, we will reconvene.
It'll be that from conference line.
Yeah. Where should I call?
Well, if you call in, then Robert can answer. Oh, you mean on your side?
Yeah, I can call front, so. Steve, it starts at 3:00.
That is what we, ETO and Robert won't cap it in phone.
I can text them. I was getting texted to.
Yeah.
If you can't answer.
Yeah, anytime it's more than one, otherwise, you know, see what happens.
Yeah.
That one.
Well, that's the, I'm thinking it's on this one.
Well, actually. It's 4138 for conference line.
Oh, right, right. Oh, and this is going to be in the closer line? Candy one?
Yeah. Yeah, let's plan on this. Yeah, what do we just plan on?
I don't have to just go on stake. I don't want to get all mixed up when you're on here. And I think I should, um, just if there's any need to explain what happened with this.
I know.
I had a long day. I got in the car and just. We have a quorum, so I would make a motion that...
Can we wait a second?
We have everyone, except for Curtis, and we've lost him. It's horrible.
Do you remember who submitted the Thompson bills? It's not big enough, sorry.
Yes, it was Jay Lynn.
Wasn't it me?
Yes, it was you. It was you. Okay, we are reconvening the regular meeting of the Grand County Council Tuesday, September 18, 2018. It is 6 o'clock. We are at General Business Action Items Discussions and Considerations. Jay, approving proposed project list to be submitted to the Grand County Transportation Special Service District for consideration of projects funding for 2019. Bill.
Yes. So every year, I bring a list to the council for potential projects that the council sends to the Transportation District and for them to look it over and see if they want to do those. On that, on that list, at least it's on mine, it says a total down there of $470,000.
Oh, that's where I saw it.
We'll mark that off, discard that, because that was my big wish list. I've scaled it down. So what you got is $165,000.
Oh.
It's obvious that, you know, mineral leases isn't coming in like it was, so on and so forth. So these are the projects that I suggest the council sends to the district and have it look it over and see if it's very interesting to form these projects for the county. And I will say, on my road department report, activity report, so many of those bigger projects, if you, you know, you've read that, it says collaborated with Transportation Service District. And so Mr. Keel, you know, had mentioned that some of those projects. And they put a lot of money in, in some of the projects. When the mineral lease money was really coming in good, they were funding everything. I mean, buying materials, reversing, reversing equipment, costs and salary and benefit costs. Then when it kind of, you know, sloughed off there, they're able now to fund it, to buy the materials. Is about all it can do right now, so. And on the shipping projects in particular, you know, so. So that's what that means by collaboration, you know, we're working together on getting some of these projects.
Roy, do you have a question?
I'd just like to make a motion. I move to approve the 2019 project list to submit to the Grand County Transportation Special Service District for consideration of funding and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Do I have a second? Second by Greg Halliday, motion by Rory Paxman. All in, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is approving proposed revision to the July 31, 2018 independent contract agreement with Francis Lee Shenton to waiver liability insurance requirements and correct the termination date, Zachariah Levine. I thought, oh, we have to postpone it, don't we? I knew we were postponing it. Just, okay, while he's getting set up, I would entertain a motion to postpone item K.
Can you read what item K is?
Item K, adopting proposed resolution approving the Grand County Pre-Disaster Hazard Mitigation Plan 2019.
I make a motion to postpone item K as read by Chair McGann. And authorize that chair to sign all associated documents.
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely, well.
You wouldn't authorize.
Until we, well, she'll be signing the agenda minutes. Anyway, yeah.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Greg Halliday. All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you, Rory, for pointing that out.
And Madam Chair, if I can just explain, I think the reason you all are postponing is because there's a lack of the actual plan to go with the resolution.
Yeah.
Okay. We did try to get ahold of Mr. Bailey, but we're unsuccessful.
Okay, thank you. Now we are to L, approving a proposed revision to July 31, 2018 independent contracting agreement with Francis Lee Shenton.
Okay, so the date corrections were just to clarify which dates, which actually were important county in the natural liaison to the inspector position.
It's more how long the contract will go.
And, correct.
Okay.
And, and then also to have the contract run through the, this calendar year rather than through the October. And that was just to ensure that the adequate time for the transition planning with our new natural liaison technical inspector and Mr. Shenton.
M, approving the incorporation of Trail Mix employees and associated cost into the county's Community and Economic Development Department effective July, January 1st, 2019. Zachariah and?
And company.
And company. Zachariah, John, and company.
Everybody that's here.
Everybody that's here. Chris Baird and John West. Thank you.
So, um, this is a, a request that has, um, evolved over time. Being, it's the product of many conversations to determine the future of Trail Mix employees. Um, and so, uh, we received word that, uh, the Canyonland National History Association, which is the entity that served as a fiscal agent, uh, for, uh, Trail Mix employees, uh, was no longer going to provide, uh, payroll services and the fiscal agency services, uh, to Trail Mix after, uh, this calendar year. And so, um, that precipitated a conversation about what the future of those employees, uh, would be in the context of fulfilling Trail Mix's, uh, responsibilities in designing, building, maintaining, um, and otherwise coordinating activities around non-motorized trail, uh, activities. And so, um, Trail Mix leadership and the, uh, Trail Mix Committee, um, which is a committee that's been established by county resolution, and the employees, uh, I mean, the, um, project manager and the, and the trail coordinator and their part-time, uh, staff and county staff, uh, all huddled together to, uh, identify various, uh, solutions, uh, in order to, to maintain the, uh, level of service, uh, if you will, on our trail network and to ensure, uh, that Trail Mix could continue operating and providing services to the county. And, uh, I would just mention that, um, you know, my office, it takes, has a particular interest in this in part because, uh, we serve as the staff liaison to Trail Mix, uh, but also in the sense that, uh, with Community and Economic Development, uh, being in charge of our office, we are very aware of the contributions that Trail Mix has paid to our community. Uh, I would say that they've been, you know, one of the most important economic drivers in our community. Our trail network brings in millions of dollars in sales tax, um, and many of the visitors that, that we receive here and host here are coming because of the trail network that, that Trail Mix is largely responsible for. Uh, Trail Mix also, um, you know, greatly improves the quality of life for our residents and the public health, uh, outcomes that we, we have in our community and aspire to reach in our community, uh, are largely, are, are supported by, um, the trail network that, that Trail Mix has overseen. And so, um, you know, for all of these reasons, uh, our office, um, raised the idea that, uh, that Trail Mix employees could, um, slide into the, to the Grand County organizational structure within, within the Community and Economic Development Department. We have helped with, uh, you know, grant applications, uh, as well, and so it seemed like a natural fit. We also explored, uh, Trail Mix employees going into the maintenance department, um, but ultimately the, the group of staff, uh, and Trail Mix, you know, uh, produced the recommendation that, that Trail Mix employees become part of the Community Economic Development Department. And so, what you have in front of you is, is basically a two-part request. Um, it is a request to create two, uh, few full-time positions in the Community and Economic Development Department, um, and then, uh, two categories of part-time positions. Um, so there will be a trail manager, uh, and a trail coordinator, and then two levels of trail technicians. Um, Chris Baird, uh, the budget officer, has helped, uh, create a draft budget, uh, for Trail Mix. And so, uh, the first part of the request is, is a green light to establish, uh, the positions within the Community and Economic Development Department and then, you know, a tentative green light to, um, have the Budget Advisory Board review the proposed budget for Trail Mix. We realized that none of this would be, you know, fully authorized until, uh, the county council approves the 2019 budget, but the Budget Advisory Board needs, um, to evaluate the, the proposed budget in the context of the, the whole, uh, great county budget. So, uh, I'm sure that I left out some details and important, uh, components of this and I welcome the biggest to fill in the gaps.
I could just jump in on a couple of things. There are some documents on the dais, uh, labeled item M. Uh, first of all, that Trail Mix did receive a, a grant just today. We got word of it. $14,000 reimbursement for the Non-Motorized Trail User Education and Trail Network Improvement, uh, Grant Program. So, uh, that's one thing. So, a lot of the revenues are grant. Uh, they also do map sales of the area maps, especially mountain biking, and the shops sell those, although is donated back to the, to Trail Mix. Um, uh, the other thing I want to point out on your dais is a history of Trail Mix in terms of how many volunteer hours, uh, Trail Mix manages to coordinate and put together what their cost per mile to build is, only 2,000 versus the 25,000 per mile industry average. I mean, these are things you all have learned over the years from hearing about Trail Mix as this county committee, but now we're talking about bringing it into our organization, um, more clearly as, in a specific department. But the, the big thing I want to show you, though, is all the work that is already lined out on the third document that's on the dais, um, month by month, all the way through, uh, December of 2020.
They're amazing.
At which time we will be operating under a new form of government, perhaps. Anyway, uh, well into the future, uh, lots and lots of tasks for these guys. They were already bumping up against the hourly, uh, requirement by the Affordable Care Act of, you know, 29 and a half or more on average over a six-month period or whatever, uh, which is really the reason CNHA, it was no, it's no longer under the umbrella when they're having to be faced with the possibility of having to pay health insurance benefits. And so, um, there's plenty of work and, so anyway, I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Ruth.
Uh, we do have draft, draft, draft descriptions for these positions. I believe they are included in your package for context, but we're not asking for approval of those job descriptions today, uh, because there's still work to do, um, between my office and, um, the resources office and, and just to make sure that they are in fine form before we do ask for approval of those.
Question?
Yes.
Will the Trail Mix Committee continue to function as they are now?
Yeah.
Meeting and?
Uh, I don't know if exactly as they are now, but the supervision of the employees has been, that's a part of the executive, but the supervision must switch over to Zachariah and, and the county superintendent. So, it could now be a. But in terms of the way that the volunteer meetings work in terms of identifying priorities and discussing those and, you know, generally discussing, you know, all matters related to, to non-motorized trail activity, uh, that body will continue to function and provide advice to, to, to my office, assuming this goes through, uh, and to the Trail Mix employees developing the, the supervising oversight, what Rupert's thinking on.
Yes.
Um, yeah, is this going to, is this going to cost the, uh, the county taxpayers any additional funding?
It, it will cost more money for sure, and so.
Which is, which is going to have to come out of general fund, general revenues or?
It's.
It could come under.
They're also eligible to come out of the optional transportation sales tax or the, uh, the restaurant and car rental tax or the transportation tax are all eligible revenue streams to pay for.
Well, I understand that, but that money's going other places already.
Yeah, it's, well, not everything except for the optional sales tax for transportation, which still has funds available, although, um, I have to look a little closer at the law discovering that. I know that we spend that money on projects. I'm not so sure that we spend it on, uh, general operations, but, you know, it can pay for a component at least. And so, yeah, it's, um, there's a cost associated with it. Um, and it's, it, it's really inevitable that, uh, once you get to the format where we have 150 miles, same track, plus hiking trails, questering trails, ski trails, you know, that the, the demands of maintaining that system are going to be pretty significant. And so, I think this is kind of, but if all this is going to end up costing this amount of money and bringing these employees up to full-time status, but you're right, it will cost money. And so, that's, uh, why the Budget Advisory Board requested really that the council approved this before they start budgeting for it. And we'll have to, you know, figure out what our options are in terms of where we can find the money. And so, that'll be something, perhaps, uh, I think we have a agenda tomorrow. We have enough time for it, and then a week after, we can discuss it with the council also, hoping to start to, uh, establish some meeting dates for joint budget, budget for the council in October. Uh, unless we can figure out a way to, you know, an easy way to pay for this, then we might have to figure something else out, uh, with the council. And, you know, there's a lot of pieces at play when it comes to this. Some of these monies, like for instance, um, Sagi MS requesting a sizable increase to their, uh, TRT contribution. So, this all ties into each other, and, uh, that's some of the big questions that the council's going to have to ask really themselves is, uh, what kind of contribution to the other end these ones make? And that affects, uh, the resources that are available for our own operations, including Trail Mix's, if we're breaking laws. I would also note that, um, you know, each year Trail Mix is quite successful in acquiring grant monies, uh, but it's uncertain from year to year how much grant money will come in. Uh, I would also note that, um, uh, you know, we will be going to the city of the lab to ask for a financial contribution to this, given, um, you know, value of, of Trail Mix employees as an economy driver, uh, quality of life and public health. Uh, that number, you know, contribution is yet to be determined if anything, uh, but it is, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, the city acknowledges the value of our trail network and the importance of keeping it, uh, very well maintained. And, and, um, and I think as Chris said, uh, you know, for all intents and purposes, this is probably inevitable. Uh, you know, Trail Mix, for its entire history, has gotten off, gotten along with, you know, just an incredible number of volunteer hours and is straight by with, you know, relatively minimal contributions, um, from, from the county, uh, in comparison to, to its AIP and its economic impact and then grants. And so, um, you know, we're at a, we're at a state, I think, where we really need to think about maturation and, and long-term sustainability for, for this component of our, of our system and, and just wanting to, uh, increase accountability. So, uh, yes, it will cost more money, um, but, uh, I think the impacts or the risk of, of not investing in this, um, new operation from a, from a county's perspective is, is far outweighs the, the cost that, that would be incurred. And, you know, just also, I'm not sure how you drafted the job description thus far, Zachariah, but I think, you know, in our discussions, we talked about as we move these positions in the full-time, they increase the scope of the position to include the path maintenance, because, uh, that side of maintenance that has been with, uh, Marvin and the Reds Department and, you know, to a degree, some of it will still have to be, uh, with the Reds Department for technical reasons, but, um, you know, some of that work did perhaps get picked up, um, you know, for, with these full-time positions. So, the idea is to consolidate, uh, all the trail maintenance into, uh, this, this position and ultimately in the long run perhaps to expand the whole concept to be more of a parks, trails, recreation type department. It's not that way yet, but it could be in the future. And so, you know, looking into the, we're looking into the future and we're designing the concept of this, these positions and, and also the fund that we set up.
Could you, uh, talk about the county's standing as a nonprofit and being able to accept donations from trail users outside of grants?
Yeah, I mean, we're virtually identical to, by terms of the eligibility for write-off donation to this organization. So, there's really not a lot of difference. Um, and I, you know, I think I keep that, I don't think I got it, Zachariah, but the, I, I can say the link to, uh, how that all works. And, you know, if, the county needs a, um, a letter from the state providing that, uh, it's called an information letter, and it's just going to be provided to anybody who donates to the county if they improve that their donation is, uh, eligible to do it, not, or if there's N and D that requires some similar, uh, status or a grant or whatever, same thing.
I think to your concern, Greg, it's not that Trail Mix would suddenly stop raising funds. Um, you know, they would continue with their fundraising efforts between the grants and donations and selling the maps at the bike shops. So, although this, uh, uh, proposal outlines a, a higher budget impact, there would, it's my understanding that there would be, uh, revenue coming into the county through those donations and grants that would offset this expenditure.
Well, no, but it doesn't, it doesn't sound like it's going to offset it completely.
Not completely, but it's, uh, it is an investment in, uh.
Well, I mean, I think you have to realize that there would be no amount of bike industry with no, with no tracks.
Yes, Rory?
Yeah, I understand that. Understand that.
Think of it now, think about the, the, you know, there is a responsibility on behalf of the county, um, not only just, uh, in the general sense, but in the technical sense, all the routed ways that we procure the BLM, Grand County is the secretary of all of it, and we've agreed to maintain them. Not, not CNHA, Grand County is the holder of those eastmans, and we've agreed now, you know, by, by signing under those, we want to maintain those trails. So, it is on us to do it. It's not. And, you know, the county needs a letter from the state providing that, call it an information letter. And it's just going to be provided to anybody who donates to the county if they approve that their donation is eligible to do it, or if there's an entity that requires some similar status or a grant, whatever, same thing.
I think to your concern, Craig, it's not that Trail Mix would suddenly stop raising funds. You know, they would continue with their fundraising efforts between the grants and donations and selling the maps of the bike shops. So although this proposal outlines a higher budget impact, there would, it's my understanding that there would be revenue coming into the county through those donations and grants that would offset this expenditure.
Well, no, but it doesn't, it doesn't sound like it's going to offset it completely.
Not completely, but it's, it is an investment in the...
Well, I mean, I think you have to realize that there would be no amount of bike industry with no tracks.
Yes, Rory?
Yeah, I understand that, understand that.
And so, I mean, certainly, think of it now, think about the, you know, there is a responsibility on behalf of the county, not only just in the general sense, but in the technical sense, all the routeways that we procured with the BLM. Grand County is the secretary of all of them. We've agreed to maintain them. Not CNHA, Grand County is the holder of those easements. And we've agreed now, you know, by signing out of those, we want to maintain those trails. So it is on us to do it. It's not something that we can not do.
Yeah, I just, I just have a hard time justifying using property tax money to pay for tourist, tourist...
Yeah, and I, you know, I think that...
Vacations, so...
Yeah, to the greatest extent possible, we don't use property tax money to buy one of those things. Trail Mix, the contribution that Grand County has provided to Trail Mix over the years has always come from the restaurant and car rental tax. And I don't have any intention of funding Trail Mix with property tax money. And, you know, it's not something that...
Okay.
But certainly, because those tourism taxes offset general fund expenses, you know, it's, it can have an effect on the overall playthings going on. But I was fully planning on figuring out a way to pay for it with the optional transportation sales tax, which is authorized us to put that money for trail projects as well as motorized and paved type projects. But the other tourism taxes are eligible.
I would also state unequivocally that our trail network is one of the most defining elements of quality of life for thousands of people who live in this community. And in the context of providing infrastructure to our tourists, that is also one of the defining elements of people visiting here and staying in hotels here and shopping here and eating here. And so, you know, we will be more than compensated for that investment through those tourism taxes.
Rory?
I would just say you're right on a lot of that. And the only thing I would be is, I'm just thinking, you know, it'd be really nice to know if the city would be willing to help us out with this before I vote on this. So I'm not real comfortable on voting on it until we find out what, if the city would be willing to help us out with this before I make my vote.
I mean, in effect, nothing is formally authorized until you approve the budget. So, you know, I think today what we're looking for is that we might have the concept, assuming that the financings work out and we can find a solution. Yeah, I mean, the ultimate, the ultimate, whether or not these positions are full-time or how much they're going to cost will be dictated by the budget that you pass in December. And so, if it ends up that you have to make cuts, then that'll be one thing. I would say, though, that regardless of whether it's state-owned, you can still are responsible to maintain those trails. And so, it would be nice if the city were to, but you have to also realize that most of the work is outside of city limits. Not that they don't get the benefit of the economic development, a lot of that, obviously.
And I would like to emphasize once again, you know, as far as I, I would say eighty to ninety percent of my friends and people I know use the trails, either for hiking or biking. So it does help the tourists, but I think a large number of our citizens, that we are also providing recreation for our own citizens, if not more so, because they use it 12 months a year instead of for just a brief period of time when they're visiting.
Yeah, I mean, one other concept, which is more medium-term, long-term, is to discuss with the BLM, you know, some of the more high used areas, creating of the parking areas like a BRM. And that's, I think, a concept that's being explored. And even if it were to take effect, it would be, you know, probably a couple of years at least before it would happen. But establishing a revenue sharing agreement with the BLM. And so, that would be an additional revenue stream, which I probably have to count on for a couple of years, if ever. And so, it's, what I do is, I, you know...
Yeah, another thing that came up, the question of the city, early on in the discussion was, I was also kind of like, why wasn't the city take them on? They get to benefit all these tourists coming. But Trail Mix was formed by the county, and all the assets that they have are technically owned by the county. So it's, it's already like under the umbrella, and so it's just kind of like coming closer to the center.
No longer a statue, huh?
With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. A motion? Did you have another question? No? Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to approve the incorporation of the Trail Mix employees into the community and economic development department, together with associated revenues and costs to an appropriate fund effective January 1st, 2019, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Emma Clapper, seconded by Jaylen Hawks. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I haven't had my say yet.
You haven't?
I fully support Trail Mix. I had the privilege of going to their meetings for a few months, and I feel like they operate a very lean organization. They're very impressive with the amount of work they get done on the budget that they bring in, and they're very proactive about going after grants and successful at getting them. I feel absolutely comfortable voting tonight because, well, first of all, I would support it, but second, it's keeping our options open in terms of housing them. If we don't vote on it, the Budget Advisory Board can't move forward in working through the numbers to make sure it's doable. So that's all I have to say. Let's vote.
Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? All opposed?
No.
Okay. Passes four to what?
I'm in favor.
Oh, oh, in favor?
In favor.
Okay, passes five to zero.
Because of what you said.
Okay, thank you.
I would really like you to see if you can talk with us, see if they help out a little bit.
Yeah, I can't justify it on property taxes.
We are now on item N. Notice of a public hearing for a property tax increase for general operations and the library. Chris Barrett.
So as I kind of indicated before, the future consideration at a prior meeting, state law requires that you make the decision to go through or initiate a truth and taxation hearing before you really know if you actually have to raise taxes. There's, you know, quite a few entities around the state that resolve that issue by noticing truth and taxation and oftentimes don't actually raise taxes. But I think that this year, it's something that you might want to keep in your bag of options, whether we end up doing it or not is another thing. The salary increase is a fairly substantive increase, probably one of the biggest singular increases that we'll see in a long time. And I think it's been about 13 years since the last time that the council raised the general operations property taxes, which is quite a while. And the reason why we've been able to go so long is because we had options to increase sales and use taxes, which were mostly and predominantly paid for by tourists. But we've kind of hit the wall on the ability to increase those taxes, kind of done just about as much as we possibly can. And so, it really kind of brings us to the point of asking ourselves, how are we going to continue to meet the demands of the resort community where the market conditions are pretty competitive with regard to wages? And we're seeing quite a lot of inefficiency in the organization right now with overtime and turnover, retention problems. Some departments, you know, have gone to the point where they're almost entirely dysfunctional for lack of staff or intermittently dysfunctional. And that almost entirely revolves around the wage issue. And so, I would say that the salary adjustment is really the sole reason why I would ask that you initiate a truth and taxation hearing. Right now, you know, just in the budgeting process, and this is still a fluid issue that I'm working through, but we're getting close to figuring out, you know, or narrowing down on what the bottom line would be with the salary adjustment. And for the general fund specifically, I'm showing a deficit today of about 890,000, and that's only with a $60,000 contribution to NTRT, to the EMS. And so, if we were to increase that, then that money that's offsetting general fund expenditures right now would not be able to do so. And so, that, the deficit would go up respectively, which would, you know, kick it over a million dollars of deficit. There's going to be some contingency in the budget that likely won't get spent, and so we'll try to calculate what that is. But just to give you an idea of what the process is like, the reason why we have it on this council agenda is because in order to save money on the noticing of a truth and taxation hearing, it's useful to just notice it when we send out our tax bills, because it goes to the exact same people that need to get that notice. And so, that would save us a fair bit of money if we advertised using the tax bill versus sending out a separate postcard mailing. And the deadline that the company has placed on us was the 17th, I believe, but they extended it for us to tomorrow morning.
Who was that?
The printing company, I can't remember what their names are.
Data Center.
Data Center is the name of the company that does our tax bills. And so, it would still have some cost, $913, $914 to add this notice to the tax bill mailing, but it would be considerably more expensive to do a separate mailing. And so, that's why it's on this particular agenda. I think perhaps in your packet, you've got a timeline with deadlines for truth and taxation in your packet. The actual mailing doesn't really have to go out by law until, I believe, the end of October. And we have until, I think roughly, according to the data center, mid-October. So we'd have, I think, two potential meetings, joint meetings with the Budget Advisory Board and the council to work out exactly what information or what taxing, proposed tax increase we would put on that notice. And that particular value would be the maximum amount that the council would be able to approve as a tax increase. But there really is no minimum. By the end of the budgeting process, you could eliminate the entire tax increase or reduce it. And another kind of interesting twist is that I think there's some talk of potential TRT legislation passing next year, but we wouldn't know until the budget was well already approved. But if there were a significant difference, we might want to open the budget, you know, after May or whenever it would take effect, and make some adjustments. The actual rate, tax rate that people pay is set in what, June or July? When is that?
July.
July. So if we made the adjustment and there were the transfer from the promotional side of TRT into the mitigation side, I mean, that's another element that could negate or significantly reduce an already approved budget for a tax increase. But again, that's all very hypothetical. So realizing that the actual tax rate that gets approved is going to be next July. And so, there's plenty of opportunities between here and there to figure out exactly what we want to do. But I do think that the salary increase is a vital component of improving morale and efficiency. And so, I think that maintaining all of our options is a good idea. Like I say, in October, we can try to flesh out what the ceiling would be and what we had advertised. And then between October and December, we would work out, you know, whether or not we really needed to do budget for an increase in revenue in general operations or not. The other component of this is the library. And again, it's relatable to the salary adjustment in the library. There's quite a few employees over there. And their only option for revenue increase is property tax. They just have no other revenue stream to speak of. You know, fines and fees are so miniscule that they would never be able to cover the cost of this salary adjustment. And so, for the library, the options are considerably more limited. They do have a fund balance that they could draw for a few years before they would completely eliminate it. But in the long run, they would have, if we approved a salary adjustment for the library, there would have to be a tax increase within the next two or three years. And so, that's another component of it. Both of these, you know, fall under the council's discretion. And so, I would recommend approving, you know, noticing for both the general operations line of the property tax and the library's line of the property tax as well. And so, again, it doesn't obligate you to do it or to increase taxes, but it's certainly, in my opinion, an option that you should keep open, because the implications of not being able to approve or fund the salary adjustment are pretty significant. And I think that, you know, it's, it's really vital to bringing the county up to a functional state and eliminating a lot of overtime and a lot of just inefficiency related to retention recruitment problems, which are only going to get worse. And, you know, we're moving into a time of transition where we are going to have a new form of government, and I certainly wouldn't want to pass the torch to that new form of government, you know, in a dysfunctional, underfunded state. That just adds more stress to the whole equation. Any questions for me?
I have a couple. Would it be possible if, because I know our fund balance is at the height that it can be, unless, we can take some out and put it in capital outlay projects, I believe, but we can't put any more in our fund balance. We are pretty much leveled off on that.
No, we're not.
No, that's not...
No, we're not.
I don't think so.
Okay, because that was not the information I was given.
Me too. I was given that same information.
Which one?
That we're close to...
Yeah, we're close. We're very close.
Well, the...
But we can put things into capital.
But we can move things out of our fund balance and put it into capital projects. Anyway, leading to that, my question was, I know I'm working, Jaylen's working, Curtis is working, we're working really hard to change the formula for the transient room tax. And I'm, you know, hopeful, you know, cautiously hopeful that that can happen and that we can do that. And I was wondering if you can, I know it would cost the money, more money, to mail it out then, but what would be the, can we put a truth and taxation up? Is this the only time of year we can do truth and taxation?
It has to be mailed by the end of October, and so, the notice does. And so, that...
You can't do a notice at another time, because I know other districts have had truth and taxation...
They're on a different, they're on a fiscal year. So the school district, for instance, is on a June to July fiscal year, and so...
Well, I know, isn't, is the mosquito abatement and the cemetery district and...
They're on calendar year.
They're on our calendar years, and I know they've gone for truth and taxation at other times.
The mosquito dis, oh, yes, they have, yeah.
They have. They've gone at other times. So are we prohibited?
Not other times, no. They're, they have to follow the exact same schedule we do.
The calendar is statewide. That's the tax commission's calendar. If your calendar year ends...
They're, yeah, the rules are set. We have no other time. This is...
That's what I was asking. So you've answered my question, because I was trying to remember when the...
Just remember that this is not...
Cemetery district, they did it at this time.
During their budget meeting in December.
Because we started the process so much earlier, that was, or we started talking about it?
You can start it earlier, but you can't do it later for the following year.
Yeah, for that, yeah.
So if we were interested in 2020, then we could talk about that. But if we want to do anything for 2019, this is the timeline that we're on.
Yeah. So again, advertising truth and taxation doesn't obligate you to raise taxes.
Oh, I understand that completely. I understand that completely, but I also understand the public and their perception. When they see something like that, they're not going to...
No.
They're going to jump to the conclusion that we're raising taxes. They're going to jump to the conclusion that we're raising taxes and.
Yeah. And so, like I say, it hasn't happened in thirteen years. I'm not exactly sure how long it takes before you're officially fiscally conservative, but that's.
That's a lot, thirteen years is the lucky or unlucky number.
And so.
I know, I've.
Yeah, and I understand it's difficult. And I think that when I was on the council, I certainly didn't want to do the same thing either. And I was lucky in the, with regard to the fact that there were other options. And so, but, you know, it's not, it's not fiscally conservative to bleed out, you know, overtime and bleed out in training.
Oh, and there's some many projects we've neglected. I mean, we're, we're, we're working out of closets. I mean, I recognize the need for more funding, and no one has advocated for increasing salaries more than I did. It's just, it's a tough thing to do.
Oh, yeah, undoubtedly, I agree.
That was my question was, because I wasn't sure if we could just wait until after we could find out if we could change the TRT. And if we couldn't, but if we can't do that, that answers a big question that I had.
Well, again, I mean.
But that would make it.
When you pass the, you have the opportunity to amend the budget next year before you actually have to approve the rate. And so even if you approve a budget in December that includes a tax increase, if the law changes, you can open the budget and amend it.
To take the tax increase off?
If, yeah, if there's the, if the law provides the capacity to shift money from the promotional side of the transient room tax to the mitigation side, and it was adequate to offset the need associated with the tax increase, then you could amend the budget and basically supplant the tax increase with the transient room tax change. And then when you get to the point in July where you approve the rate, you approve it at the amended budget rate, which would either be less or not changed at all. And so that's, that's how I would recommend dealing with the possibility. I mean, I'm not even saying that we necessarily need to raise taxes at all at this point. We still have to go through the process and evaluate all of our options, and that's what we'll do in October and November. But if it gets to the point where we decide, yes, we need to do some property tax increase, and then next year the law changes and we're able to shift money from promotion to mitigation, then we can open the budget and amend the budget. And if we bring the general operations line back down to the point where it is this year, collections this year, then that wipes the property tax increase out, and it won't happen.
Yeah, the, the thing that, the big reason we're discussing this tonight is because there's the mailing going out. And so.
Well, I understand.
If we piggyback on that, then we save the money. Otherwise, then if we notice it separately, we have to pay for design costs and postage costs and more to go out later. And so with the idea of us, the council, having the option to adjust the rate for 2019 and to hold a truth and taxation hearing where citizens can actually come and speak during the hearing, I would like to make a motion, if I may. And I would move to approve the noticing, a truth and taxation hearing for December 4th, using the tax bill as fulfillment of the parcel specific notice requirement, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
I would like to second that motion.
Any further discussion?
I'll just say again, this is, I'll be a broken record. It doesn't obligate us to raise taxes. I know that there is the concern of public perception, once you notice this, they're going to think it's a done deal. In this day and age, with all the social media and the, you can do big, big newspaper ads, I think that we can mitigate for a lot of that if we work through the options and find that we don't need to do this tax increase. But in order to maintain the option to do that if we have to, that's why we're talking about it and voting today.
I think it's very irresponsible not to have it as an option.
Yeah, I was just going to use that word, irresponsible.
Yeah, I, yeah. It's, you can understand, it's hard.
And I do hope that, that we can work through different options and then work really hard to change public perception. Or if it comes to that, hopefully the TRT thing will come through. So I'm ready to vote.
Any further questions? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes four to one. Rory Paxman in opposition.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
So, yeah, I think, Ruth, you're going to send out a poll on the October joint meetings?
Mm-hmm. In fact, under calendar items, we can talk about it here, too.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Chris.
Approving, approving creation of an ad hoc Moab Area Responsible and Sustainable Recreation Tourism Study Group and approving initial members. Councilwoman Hawks.
Thank you. So this came up last county council meeting. The idea was put forth to the council and to the public of creating a work group composed of some citizens and our public land partners so that we can better, we can address ways to promote education and responsible tourism, sustainable tourism. There's widespread nonpartisan belief. I believe this is one of the things that, a few years ago, the county may not have been united on it. I believe that mostly, most citizens would like to see transient room tax money spent in a little different way to, to boost responsible and sustainable tourism. So with that in mind, I met with our travel council director and with Walt Dabney and Liz Thomas, and talked about initial, the members of the study group and perhaps where this group could go. And I, my vision for it is just a brainstorming, come up with concrete solutions to the problems that we're facing. And so with that in mind, I moved to create a study group with the specific purpose of working with our public land partner agencies to explore options. We're utilizing trans room, transient room tax promotional money to promote responsible and sustainable recreation and tourism in Grand County. And hereby appoint Grand County citizens Walt Dabney and Liz Thomas as initial members of the study group with the option to add additional members as is appropriate, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I actually have a quick processing question. Would the county council be the one, the body to approve additional members? Or are you saying the committee members would have that power?
The committee members.
Okay. Declaration.
So it's, it's a casual committee, not through resolution?
Ad hoc committee, not by resolution. This gives our public land partner agencies the assurance that the time that their staff spends working on these issues is not going to be wasted, that the county council is actually behind this, and that we approve the committee.
And the committee's not asking for any kind of fiscal contribution?
I'm sorry, I have one more. The committee is just the two citizens and that's it?
Right now. And you, right?
They will name additional members.
And they will name additional.
Are you a part of the committee?
And the members of public, I can be if they feel like that's useful. And I can go to listen so that I can report to the council.
Oh, another, another meeting. Oh, how fun.
But I think the initial members will be in addition to Walt and Liz, National Park Service, BLM, Sam Flats.
Sovereign lands.
Sovereign lands.
Forests and lands.
Forests and service, yes, yes. And there are other entities that would probably be very good in this discussion, and those committee members will be deciding on that as they work through options.
Okay. And just one more comment.
One more question.
I just want this body to know that our travel council director, a few months ago, signed up for, I think it's next month, a training on sustainable tourism. So she's already very much invested in this idea as well. So just another positive where it could be good collaboration.
Oh, maybe the, who's putting on the workshop?
It's, it's actually done online. I don't remember the name of the group.
Maybe the committee members would like to participate.
That's a possibility, yeah. There's cost, and it's like a four month, I mean, a four week training, couple hours once a month or something, I can't remember.
Anyway.
Yeah, Elaine's been doing great efforts, and she's definitely putting a lot of effort into education with the videos that the travel council has been producing, as well as some assistance with other signage. But I don't think that these two things are exclusive of each other.
Right.
And I think the travel council has a lot on their plate and a bandwidth and, you know, having a committee that really is just gathering ideas and not really empowered to do anything at this point.
Just an idea committee.
Doesn't seem harmful to me. I would say that maybe with the makeup of it, that early on, there could be some proposal of who is included. I wouldn't want the group to necessarily be three dozen citizen members and one public lands official. So maybe that would kind of be some homework for the committee to kind of figure out what we're talking about here. But besides that, I think it's a great idea, and I'm appreciative of citizens playing an active role in the community and willing to do what we can to support them, if even just giving it a seal of approval.
Any further discussions or questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Passes four, one opposed. Okay, passes four to one. Rory Paxman opposed. Approving volunteer appointments to districts and county boards and commissions, Moab Travel Council Advisory Board. Councilmember Hawks.
Okay, the, some members of the travel council advisory board met and interviewed six applicants for two vacancies. They, the applicants were, included Jason Taylor, Jeremy Day, MB Tatsicild, Carla Gregory, Jacob Suter, and Michael List. And then at the, they made their recommendation to the full travel council advisory board on September 11th in an open meeting, and they voted unanimously to recommend Jason Taylor and Jacob Suter. Both of their terms will end December 31st, 2018. So that's the recommendation to the council for new members of the travel council advisory board. So I moved to approve the midterm appointments of Jacob Suter and Jason Taylor with terms expiring 12/31/18, 2018, to serve on the Moab Area Travel Council Advisory Board and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Jaylen Hawks. Secretary by Rory Paxman. Questions? I do. I have a question. Were they asked, or do you know if they are in favor of changing the formula for the TRT tax? Are they okay with that?
I was not present at the meeting that they were interviewing.
They're not here, are they?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, Jason is, Jason is. I thought she left.
I did, I know.
Okay, Jason, what is your thoughts on whether or not the idea of taking, changing the formula so that a greater amount of the TRT tax goes towards mitigation rather than promotion?
My feeling is on it is that we're at a stage, you know, right now, and you do need, you do need to keep funding promotional account. I think if there's a scale that where, where we can kind of figure out a way that promotion still has funds to do what it needs to do is fine, you know, that we can't take that money away through mitigating towards the base needs, you know, or local base needs, then that is, that is fine. But I, I think we need to have a concrete way of supporting tourism and still promoting tourism.
What, do you remember what the proposal was that we were taking to Auburn, we're talking to Auburn, how much we were going to change it? Was it five percent? I can't remember. I have it on notes at home.
It would, rather than be a two-thirds, one-third split, it would, I think would be fifty, fifty. I'm, I'd have to go back and.
Anyway, so it's not like, it's not, there will still be a significant amount of promotion just because TRT tax goes up every year.
Right. I get it. Like, remember about 10 years ago, the state, when discussing tourism and how it was going to be put towards promotion with the state, they gave the state a budget of X amount of dollars. There was always kind of a line item that the state would have. But then when they reached, when the revenues came in that were above and beyond that, the percentage that actually went to tourism for the state dropped considerably, you know, that it dropped down where they weren't getting the full allocation of what should be to them. But that line item of what the state got in their budget, or state tourism got in the budget state, you know, was always that one area of what it was, you know. So, which I think is a, is a pretty good idea. So that as tourism goes up, you know, we, the travel council is still budgeting X amount of dollars every year for tourism. But as it goes above that, more of those, more of that money gets put towards other things, and so the ratio, you know, definitely rises. That make sense?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, because we have had members of the travel council who were incredibly opposed to any change in the formula. And I just wanted to ask if the ones that were being recommended had that attitude or if they were flexible with changing the formula.
I would remind you that Jason also serves on the EMS Special Service District, which as they came in tonight and requested more TRT money, I think that he has that.
He understands the need.
Yeah.
And so anyone know Jacob?
I do.
You think he'd be amenable to that?
He'd be an excellent member of the travel council advisory board.
Okay, that's, then I, okay, that's my, that was the question I had. Did anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks for your service, Jason.
Thank you.
We are to the consent agenda items. I would not mind help reading this.
Sure.
So I will start and read Pugh through U. And do you want to read V, Evan?
Sure.
Okay. And then when I open W and you could do X, anything, okay. Yeah, that's a lot of reading. Okay, consent agenda items. Ratifying the chair's signature on four building permits for a waiver of fees in the amount of $65 each, $262.60 total for the installation of charging stations for electrical cars at ACT Campground, Adventure Inn, Center Street Gym, and Moab Springs Ranch. Item R. Ratifying the chair's signature on eight customer installation agreements for Rocky Mountain Power Watt Smart Small Business Direct Programs at a total cost of $7,114.42. Approving proposed grant agreement between the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources and the Grand County Weed Department for, how do you say that?
Ravenna.
Ravenna grass or pappus grass, control and other weed controls along Mail Creek. Ravenna grass or pappus grass, control and other weed controls along Mill Creek. T. Adopting proposed resolution approving and entering into an amended and restated agreement creating the Utah Local Government's Trust, ULGT, for liability and other insurance-related services. U. Approving easements for power reroute for ramp expansion projects at the Canyon Fields Airport.
I was following along. Item, there's a lot of diagrams there. Agenda item V. Approving proposed job descriptions as redrafted and reformed by Personnel Systems and Services for the Grand County Sheriff's Office, including sheriff, jail, and search and rescue. And then there's a gazillion, hold on. Agenda item W. Approving proposed job descriptions as...
Does he have to read the jobs, or is that all?
The titles.
We were trying to read it into records on...
Okay. Recommendation, I move to approve the proposed job descriptions as redrafted and reformed out of Personal Systems and Services for Grand County Sheriff's Office, including sheriff, jail, and search and rescue. One, chief deputy. Two, emergency management director. Three, investigations patrol lieutenant. Four, jail commander. Five, sergeant. Six, senior criminal investigator. Seven, criminal investigator. Eight, search and rescue commander. Nine, search and vice rescue commander. Ten, assistant jail commander sergeant. Eleven, deputy sheriff senior. Twelve, deputy sheriff two. Thirteen, deputy sheriff one. Fourteen, drug court tracker. Fifteen, dispatch supervisor. Sixteen, dispatch three, TAC coordinator. Seventeen, dispatch two. Eighteen, dispatch one. Nineteen, corrections deputy senior. Twenty, corrections deputy two. Twenty-one, directions deputy one. Twenty-two, administrative assistant. Twenty-three, food service manager. Twenty-four, food service assistant manager. Twenty-five, search and rescue technician two. Twenty-six, search and rescue technician one. Twenty-seven, victim advocate.
Item W. Approving proposed job descriptions as redrafted and formatted by Personal Systems and Services for the Roads and Bridge Department. Road supervisor, one. Road supervisor, two. Assistant road supervisor, three. Shop foreman, fleet manager. Four, mechanic, three. Five, mechanic, two. Six, mechanic, one. Seven, equipment operator, three. Eight, equipment operator, two. Nine, equipment operator, one. Ten, administrative assistant. And eleven, laborer.
Item X. Approving proposed job descriptions as redrafted and reformatted by Personnel Systems and Services for the Sand Flats Recreation Area. One, Sand Flats Director, 1840 hours. Two, Sand Flats Assistant Director slash Operations, 1840 hours. Three, Sand Flats Assistant Director of Facilities, 1840. Four, Recreation Technician Two, Seasonal, 1080. Five, Recreation Technician One, Seasonal, 1080. Six, Recreation Technician One, Intern, 1080. Seven, Sand Flats Apprentice, 200 hours.
So, who wants to move to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? Motion by Evan Clapper, seconded by Jaylen Hawks. Discussion. Yes, Jaylen?
So on the item R, the installation agreements for Rocky Mountain Power, is that $7,114.42 within budget? Was that budgeted for?
I can answer that. It is not within budget. I apologize that we don't have something to state that. It is a representative of a lot of savings. I don't know if that got calculated in there.
Yeah, it did, and it looks like it'll pay for itself in a year if those really pan out, so that's great. I was just curious if it was budgeted for.
Good question.
And then I don't, walk me through the amended and restated agreement creating the Utah Local Government's Trust. I don't, I kind of got lost in figuring out why that's necessary.
I can tell you what I know about that. They were recently audited by this Utah State Auditor, and they failed to have a few of those interlocal agreements with counties, and we are one of them, so it's just a house cleaning.
Okay.
Part of our contract. Thank you, Diana.
All right. That's it? Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We are now to discussion items, calendar items, and public notices.
Quick question on consent agenda. Do we have authorizing the chair to sign all associated documents?
Yes.
On each one of these?
Yes. And authorize the chair to sign all associated documents. Good luck. Thank you.
Are we on calendar items? That would be me.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, September. Well, let's see, tomorrow, the Utah State Association of County Commissions and Councils in Heber City. I don't remember if we have anyone going. Were you going?
I was going to go, but then they're having, oh, so I forgot to announce, they're having that recognition, recognition of the people who have been worked on the cinema court fire. J.J. Wong gave the city some money to put on a dinner, so hopefully people, they were in charge of invitations. I got them the pictures and some emails. So I don't know if the invitations, people know about it. I haven't heard, I know. So hopefully it turns out.
Hopefully some of our county staff were invited, because we definitely had lots of key players.
Oh, I put them all down, yeah.
Okay, so that's tomorrow, are you saying?
No, it's 20th, at 6 o'clock.
Oh, okay. All right, and also on the 20th, this was mentioned earlier, no, this is 8:30 in the morning, just so you know, the Sitler Board of Trustees will be utilizing our council chambers for their meeting that whole morning. I believe the public is invited, I'm not sure. And then 1:30, we have a performance review committee to consider exemplary increases for whoever's up for it. And Evan, had you already signed up for that date? Is that right?
Yes.
1:30, okay. Then on the 21st, that noontime Davis County site tour for USU, that's actually for USU Extension, is canceled for lack of participation. I know some of you all couldn't make it. Curtis was planning to go and then couldn't go, so. And then on the 27th, not on your calendar, but on the dais, is this item Y, which is pave your pathway at 1:00 and 6:00 for a couple hours each. This has to do with, hmm, let's see, it's taking place at the High School Technical Science and Art Center, and I believe it has to do with career and technical education programs with speakers and state dignitaries, dignitaries to speak on the importance of career and technical education for the future of Moab. Sounds pretty important. So I guess you choose one of those to go if you'd like. That's what I have for September.
Change.
Okay.
The Mental Health Four Corners Board meets on Tuesdays. I know at one point, they went to Wednesday for about one time, and they're back to Tuesday, so they'll be meeting on the 25th instead of the 26th.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. That's just, did you say the mental health board? Okay. Okay, anyone else for September? October, Sovereign Lands will be doing that field trip out at Dalton Wells that was mentioned, that's, oh, no, wait, yeah, is that right? Yeah, that's right, 8:30.
Yeah, it's Dalton Wells.
Uh-huh, 8:30, and that'll go till noon. And we meet at...
Two.
Meet at their offices, I believe, is that right? And then go together in a van or something. And then we do have a county council workshop for the district allocations here at 2:00 on that second before your 4:00 meeting. Budget Advisory Board, we need to talk about whether you all want to do a joint meeting each of those Wednesdays in October with the Budget Advisory Board here in these chambers. They start at 8:30, and they go till about noon. They have been, as Jaylen and Evan know. Question is, for Curtis, on behalf of him, he's requesting that instead of the 3rd, that that date be moved to Thursday the 4th. I don't even know if the Budget Advisory Board members, there are seven of them, if they could move to that date. But that is a question for that week worth asking, and then I'll have another question for the next week. That way Curtis can attend as well.
So he, just the 3rd changed to the 4th, or did you say the 10th changed?
The 10th would be the 9th, is his request.
Wow, that's...
I think that'd more be a question for the board.
Budget Board tomorrow? We can find out what their dates are.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. What about the other dates of the 17th and 24th and 31st for the county council? Those definitely work for the Budget Advisory Board. Can those work for you?
So...
The rest of the Wednesdays of the month?
So all the Wednesdays of the month to meet with the Budget Advisory Board in October, is that what's been suggested?
Yes, I mean, Curtis had a special request, but yeah, that was, the original request was each Wednesday, if needed, beginning at 8:30 till as long as 12:00 if needed. Or a different date.
I, there's never going to be a date.
They are anticipating to need each week your attention, and they're not going to go into detail, they're going to give you top level. Things, big decisions are going to be made in those meetings. Those will be action workshops, not just...
Those are like a budget workshops from the past.
But actions will be, they are listed as action items, not just discussion.
So would that be council meetings then?
They're joint, joint Budget Board and Joint Council Meeting.
I think, I agree with Evan, I think that has to, because, yeah.
Well, the Budget Board's going to be meeting all those Wednesdays regardless.
And you guys are already used to going on Wednesday, so, and so then you have the Budget Board.
So I think that with the joint meeting, it's so that we can, so the council can make, take action on those Wednesday mornings.
Find out if they can make that accommodation on the 4th and the 9th.
The first Wednesday of the month.
Well, Curtis wanted Wednesday, that Wednesday to be a Thursday, and the following Wednesday to be a Tuesday, so if that's doable for the Budget Advisory Board, I would, I would be okay with accommodating Curtis's needs. But if it's not doable for the Budget Board, I think we need to stick with Wednesday. Does that make sense? That's how I think.
We can find that out pretty much tomorrow, although we have three abs in tomorrow. So I don't know if I can find out tomorrow, actually, but I'll work on finding out. But my question to you all is, do those Wednesdays otherwise work for you guys?
I make them work.
Is there any Wednesday that cannot work for a council member?
I was actually going to miss tomorrow.
Does that make...
Oh, that means we won't have a quorum then.
I was waiting to bring that up now, but...
Okay.
Future consideration?
The calendar.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
So Elaine's on vacation, Zach is, I think, on vacation. This one over here, she can speak for herself. Can, it's not something you could call in? Because you do all have that option.
I had some folks from work that wanted an additional day, and so committed with that.
You do work?
They didn't really originally book this day, but, so, I've already been with them else, other times on their vacation, and so I don't think I could call in and tour from Canyonland, so it'd be a little awkward.
So I'll let your chair know.
Yeah, I guess that's not, I mean, I could do an evening thing, but I don't know if anybody else, but they, the board can still meet, but just not do any action items?
It's a non-meeting, and if you don't have a quorum, it's not a meeting. You don't record it, you don't take minutes, it's nothing official. You could meet just as citizens, or, but it's not an official meeting.
But they could meet with the presenters and then, and still discuss with the presenters, and then we could have any kind of action items on the next meeting?
I, I don't know. It's debatable.
Okay.
What do you think? It's, and the state code is very clear that it's not a meeting if there's no quorum, so it's more like just a bunch of people talking.
Right.
It's not official, so.
Okay.
It's been done, we have done it at county council back in the day. We could barely get three of county council members to come to a budget workshop, but they were not action items was a big part of it.
Right. Can you contact our budget officer and get his advice?
Yes.
I, for one, would welcome an additional week to read through all that material.
I will.
And then, yeah, just, there's only, so...
Yeah.
So Diana, you're not going to be there, right?
She has a funeral, Elaine's gone, Zachary's gone.
So it's just three other people.
Chris, Chris, you and me.
Chris.
Oh, but then we can't change the time of an official meeting at this point either, because it needs to be...
Not to mention scheduling people.
Right. Well, I was thinking if it's just a handful of people, maybe we could change, but we still don't feel allowed. Okay, I will make some calls after this, too, let's see.
Could you change, because you would have time if you changed it to Thursday, to post it tomorrow, if you could get a quorum on Thursday or Friday.
I can't come Friday.
We have several presenters, too, that...
Oh, yeah, you're right.
The sheriff will be out of town, I believe.
The sheriff's presenting tomorrow, yeah.
Four budgets tomorrow, just that one.
Yeah. My preference would be for the members to gather and, and then pick up the next Wednesday, and maybe there's a bunch of stuff from the sheriff that's ready to go, and I'll just...
So in other words, have the meeting unofficially, and then bring everyone up to speed the next week? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I, for, just because of the overall budget timeframe and process, I feel bad derailing that process, and...
Okay. I'm texting Mr. Baird right now.
Okay, I didn't realize that we were in jeopardy of not having a quorum, so my apologies.
Sorry, well, I could have done a better job communicating, I suppose. All right, so we'll see what Mr. Baird has to say. Shall we move on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to find out from the Budget Board if, if they can perhaps move that October 3rd to the 4th and the October 10th to the 9th at the same time, same location. Otherwise, can I, can I get back to them tomorrow and say that the Wednesdays work for you guys at 8:30? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Feeling a little like a dentist here, okay. All right, one more thing, or a couple more things for October. On the 25th is Canyon Country Partnership CCP in Green River at the River History Museum. And then on the 30th, that is the 5th Tuesday, we do have an option for a county council administrative workshop if you all want it, so we can look at that as we get closer. I don't have any joint meetings scheduled with the city, just so you know. And then on the 31st is, oh, no, we already talked about that, never mind. That's all I've got? On the October calendar, do you all have anything?
I have a question, Ruth.
Yes.
So we have that 9:00 AM council administrative workshop. If we were to not hold the meeting tomorrow, since it's not an official meeting, could that 30th work as one of the Budget Advisory Board meetings, so that we still have that additional day? We have it last time, I know it's cramming two into one week, but...
Yeah, it's a possible, the Budget Advisory Board hijacked it last time.
What's that?
The Budget Advisory Board hijacked you all's council workshop last time. So, I mean, if it worked for them, we did move to a Tuesday once. We could do it.
See what Chris says, or Budget Officer says.
Okay. All right, and let's see, on the screen...
If the sheriff wants to come Thursday, I am available Thursday before the performance review, just...
Is that a count, Bruce?
Oh, okay.
Anything else for October? Okay, moving right along, special events, those are in your packet, most of them are, well, some are permitted, some are... Most of them are, well, some are permitted, some are pending. This is mostly just to make sure you guys know what's coming up in the next couple of months, in case you have any issues for the special events coordinating committee to look at. Then employment opportunities for the record, part-time EMTs, these all close on September thirtieth. Part-time EMS paramedic, assistant food service manager in the jail, sheriff's office corrections officer, patrol deputy, victim advocate, also from the sheriff's office, communications and dispatch, and then from the library, we need a maintenance worker. Sand Flats area needs a technician one. I thought that was a tech three, I don't know.
That's another thing.
A different one, okay.
That's already-
Okay. And then the weed technician grant-funded position that Rory spoke of earlier is open. So, help us get the word out on that. And then we have the board vacancies, this is the annual board vacancies for all the terms that are coming up, ending December thirty-first of this year. Applications are due Halloween Day, October thirty-first. We have one vacancy on airport board, two on council and aging, a total of three for historical preservation commission with different ending dates, term dates. Housing Authority has one, library board one, plus a high school member. Travel Council Board has three, and these will end all in four years from the end of this year. One for the control, Noxious Weed Control Board, and one for the Public Health Board.
These are the people that's terms are ending, correct?
At the end of this year, yeah. And then on the-
So, they might reapply.
Pardon?
They might.
The districts, Archer Special Service District, those have to reside within that tiny district, two vacancies. The healthcare district, one, cemetery maintenance, one, rec. district, two, and then transportation district, and they cannot live within the city limits or Castle Valley town limits, and that's one.
Who's leaving the, oh, they, they're just, they're dead, nevermind. They'll probably reapply.
The Public Health Board is a three-year term.
Yes.
Okay. That makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay.
May I have one thing to add?
Yes.
So, Friday is the deadline to file the notice of vacant position. Received one application and notice from Terry, the candidate. I haven't had another question called or anything about it, so I anticipate that probably the only one, just so you, but last time, I think you wanted, maybe, I don't know, it was like a resume or some qualifications, but you've been applying that this time.
I, I remember interviewing him. I don't remember the resumes, but that, I have a good-
I think we made it.
So, can we fill that vacancy at the first meeting, and, or do we have to do it in five days? We can do it in the first meeting?
Okay.
So, there is legal, there's code about that. It's in Legal Review, and it's five days after the clerk submits the list of candidates to you all? Did you just submit the list, or? No, this Friday is the deadline.
This Friday.
Okay. This Friday is the deadline.
That was the current list.
I had submitted a list.
So, we don't need to have a special meeting within five days?
You, you do. It's, we'll look at that more closely, but it's-
Well, then we should schedule that right now.
Well, we can't until, after she's done.
I would say it would probably be the next week, they could probably have a calendar meeting.
Okay, so it could be the next week. Okay. That's all I wanted to know. I got confused by that, thinking, we had to do it in five days.
There is a five day. I will review that with you again.
But it's after you submit-
Five days to schedule the meeting, but it can be after the, the meeting itself.
The appointment, my understanding is the appointment has to be within five days after we receive the list of eligible candidates.
Which would mean, which would mean next week.
Can you send a deputy? Let's do it next week.
Yeah, because, so we, so, but we can't schedule the meeting until the end, till, till Friday, correct?
The, the application period is this Friday applying, so after you see that list.
We have five days, so that-
And when?
So, that means we have to have-
Don't, don't give them the list until five days before October second.
Oh, here it is.
So, we don't know when you all are going to get the list, that's, that's the point.
But we need to get it, can we get it the day before?
Anybody on your next agenda?
Yeah, but, yeah, so.
Just, just make sure, if you don't give us the list, ten days before the second, then.
We just need to get the, we just need to get the list between, is that working days?
Five days before the second.
Working days? Working days, and we need to get it, no, no earlier than the twenty-sixth of September. Is that, you'll be back in your office on the twenty-sixth of September?
No, I'll be back the first.
But does it matter if we get, if we can have it sooner, though, right? We don't have to wait five days, we can do it the next day. Is that what, is, am I correct? Oh, then we're fine. We'll put it on the agenda.
I, I'm disagreeing with that, the way I read it, but-
Can you submit it to us digitally? Can you just like schedule an email, and then we'll get it?
You have somebody else push the button?
I'll read your notes, too.
There we go, that's the answer.
Yeah, so we just need to make sure we can put them on board, or we can schedule a special meeting if we can get four people together sometime next week, if you give it to us tomorrow, or Friday. But you can't give it to us.
Five p.m. is the deadline.
Can I, may I just ask one more question? I know this is all very confusing, but, so, the deadline's five p.m. on Friday. Are you planning to submit the list to the council at five oh one, or anything like that? So, when are you planning on submitting the list? That's the question.
If we get another, I might have to check the petition, but I won't be back in the hour, it's until the first.
Okay. So, right now, you're planning on submitting the list on the first?
And we'll have it on the agenda.
You'll have it on, on the agenda, too, like, on that day.
Have interviews and appoint. Okay. Anything else on calendar? Okay, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session, pending or reasonable imminent litigation.
So moved. I moved to go into closed session or pending or reasonably imminent litigation.
Okay.
Second.
Second, motion by Jaylen Hawks, seconded by Greg Halliday. The time is seven thirty-five. Curtis is not here to fill out the forms. Who would do that? Did you phone?
You know how to do it.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you wait just a second? We're still in open. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Greg seconded.
Yeah, Greg seconded the motion, Greg seconded. Where did you just put those? Do you know where you put it?
Oh, I think he keeps them, right there.
Did you want to know that?
I have not made it, Jaylen. Did I read it?
Okay, we've got, has anybody had a chance to read this?
Yes.
No? No.
I did.
I didn't, I haven't had a chance.
Are we, is it all?
Actually, we need to record, but I need to do a few things. And we need to get off, we need to get, yeah, then we need to get off the YouTube.